Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the new Nashway Room. It is 5:33 on Monday, July 15, 2024. I'm calling to order this meeting of the Select Board. We are beginning with approval of the meeting minutes. I have one amendment. I would ask for a motion of meeting minutes with the amendment that strikes my reference to Michelle Vasquez as a CPA. She is something akin to that, but she made it very clear to me that there's a difference. I'm not either, so I don't know the difference, but just strike CPA because there is a technical reason why. So I would ask for a motion. Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. All those in favor say aye. All opposed, nay. Mr. Gifford?
Aye.
Mr. Allison?
Uh, I think we need to go.
Oh, right. Sorry. I can't hear him at all. Can you turn him up?
Can you hear me now?
A little bit. Sorry. My apologies. Roll call vote. Mr. Allison?
Here.
Mr. Gifford?
Here.
Mr. Kerrigan, here. Reminder, folks, this is being recorded and broadcast on Starland Lancaster TV. Thank you for that. So are you in favor of the minutes amendment?
Yes, yes, yes. Good motion.
Perfect. Thank you. Oh, wait. Now, yes?
No.
All right. Now we have scheduled appearances and public hearings. We have a nuisance and/or dangerousness dog hearing scheduled for 5:30. I apologize. We are now four minutes late for the start of that. Do I read the notice? Is that the best way to begin and then hand it over to the hearing officer?
Sure. Yep. That's fine.
So notice is hereby given that a nuisance and/or dangerousness dog hearing will be held on Monday, July 15, 2024, 5:30 p.m., Nashway Meeting Room on the second floor of the Prescott Building, 701 Main Street, Lancaster, Massachusetts, with the appropriate Zoom link. In accordance with Chapter 140, Section 157 of the Massachusetts General Laws and the Town of Lancaster's Bylaw, Section 10 to 12, to hear complaint of one dog, Bloodhound and Stephen Mudgett, owner of dog, 241 Chase Hill Road, to determine what course of action is deemed necessary. Written comments will also be accepted up to the time of said hearing. So for this acting in our capacity as hearing officer, I will yield to Kate Hodges to take us through the process and then begin the hearing. Kate?
Good evening. My name is Kate Hodges. I'm the administrative hearing officer. If you are planning to participate in this hearing, I would ask that you come to the front two and anybody that is a member of the audience that's in the front, if you wouldn't mind just moving to one of the rows in the back just for ease. Excellent. Thank you. I'm going to need to swear everybody in, so if you could please all raise your right hand, anybody that's going to be providing testimony or might speak. Great. Do you solemnly attest and affirm that the testimony and information you will provide this evening is true and accurate to the best of your knowledge? Agree by saying aye.
Aye.
Great. Thank you. So I'll give you a brief overview of how this works. So the Commissioner of Public Safety will come up and just give a brief overview to the Board. The Board has not seen any documents prior to this. They were only made aware that it is a nuisance-style hearing, which is what it's called under Massachusetts General Law. The folks who are the complainants will be able to come up either as a group or one and provide a statement to the Board. The statement should be somewhere around the neighborhood of five minutes, understanding that there will be time at the end for closing remarks. We will then have Ms. Villas-Tower, who is our Animal Control Officer, come up. We'll have a few perfunctory questions for her that are very, you know, commonplace regarding the animal in question. Then the owners or the keepers, one or multiple can come up, same thing, five minutes, provide anything that you wish to say for the Board to consider, understanding that one of our Board members is also online. Then Ms. Tower has the opportunity to come back up and if she has a recommendation for the Board for an outcome, she's welcome to provide that to the Board. The Board can ask any questions of Ms. Tower at that point. The Board can ask any questions of either of the other parties at that point. Certainly, you can come up to the podium. You can speak from your seat. It's not a huge room, so we want people to feel comfortable. And then there'll be somewhere in the neighborhood of two and a half to three minutes after the end if anybody wants to make a closing remark or statement. If you have any exhibits, I need to have those exhibits given to me at first. I need to stamp them into the record. They get a special sticker and then I'll distribute them to the Board. We will describe those to Member Allison and I will ask Assistant Town Administrator Kelly Dolan to go and scan them into the record so we can send them to Mr. Allison since he's electronic, so he can actually read them. If you have any questions through the proceedings, this is, again, it's administrative, raise your hand and we will try to do this. Yes, sir.
I'd just like to go to record and the record said the dog is not owned by Stephen Mudgett, it's owned by Stephanie Mudgett.
Stephanie Mudgett.
Right. This makes a big difference because I also own a bloodhound, so I don't want any confusion if my dog is out loose, which he is quite often, and people that stop in my stand, they know him and...
Understood.
It's not an issue, so it is kind of important that we have the correct person here.
Yes, sir.
Snake and rats?
Yes.
Two of them, one chase off.
Yep.
Point of order?
Yes.
Mr. Chair, does that affect the public hearing at all, the public hearing notice?
No, the notice has gone out with the address of where the animal resides, so...
But I think the question is, are two bloodhounds the same address? Two?
Yeah, I saw the name. I saw a name in the public hearing notice.
There is one.
I'm requiring.
Yeah. No, the address is sufficient. And we will hear from the parties which will definitely differentiate which dog. I guess as part of this, I can get the license as well, the dog license, license through for the dog that's owned by Stephanie. And certainly I can get that from the clerk's office, so we'll make sure that we have the correct licenser, licensee. So any other questions? That's been noted into the record. Commissioner Moody, if you just want to give a brief overview?
So in late June, I believe it was the 24th or the 25th, we were made aware of the incident and the way that we were notified was Mr. Kirkpatrick had come into the lobby of the Police Department requesting some assistance, getting hold of the dog officer. The administrative assistant was kind enough to call her on her cell phone, made that connection. We understand that the incident happened at or about 241 Chase Hill Road, which is where we got some of the dog information. I apologize because there are two hounds both listed there and apparently we're all...
I'm sorry. I'm sorry to interrupt. It's kind of the, I think he's, sorry, Chief.
That's great.
Sounds like he's close to the microphone, but it's very...
He's not anywhere near the microphone. He's about seven, six feet away, seven feet away.
And maybe slowed down a little bit. I'm just having trouble understanding.
Okay. Again, I don't have a whole heck of a lot to report on the matter, only that, you know, in keeping with the mission of the Police Department, we want to make sure that we are providing a safe environment for all of our residents and guests. So when we were made aware of the incident, we made sure that our Animal Control Officer, Villas-Tower, was contacted and that we followed everything that we needed to do in compliance with allowing a hearing, letting people speak and making recommendations going forward. Don't know if we just lost everybody online.
I hope not. That's what's happening.
Okay.
Maybe I'll check on that.
I need to text.
We saw...
I still have them.
You still have them?
Yeah.
That's great. Oh, fantastic. I believe it's her, but yes. At which point is it appropriate to ask any questions of the Commissioner? Kate?
Sure, if the Board has questions.
My only question, how were you made aware?
So again, we were made aware by Mr. Kirkpatrick coming to the Police Department himself.
Showing himself.
We do get a fax notification from the hospital as mandatory reporting. They do send us a report that ends up getting emailed to our Animal Control Officer, Villas-Tower.
Did you do that first or did Mr. Kirkpatrick show up?
Mr. Kirkpatrick came in first. I believe the incident happened on a Sunday, so we weren't made aware of the office until Monday or Tuesday when we came in.
Okay. So Mr. or Ms. Kirkpatrick, are those either...
Who are we here?
Yes? Do either one of you wish to make any statement or comment this time?
I didn't hear you doing anything.
I'm sorry.
I gave my written statement.
You gave your written statement, okay.
Was that an entered or written?
Who did you give the written statement to? Oh, okay.
I didn't know what anybody was bringing with them, so...
Okay. I have not seen the written statement, but I'm happy to take it from you, stamp it in, give it to the members. Is there anything either one of you would like to add?
We're just here...
Fine if you don't. It's just an opportunity if you want it.
Other than that, my only concern is that it doesn't happen to someone else. This is her.
This is the written statement. Okay. Absolutely.
Point of order, are we reviewing the statement?
She is signing in the statement as evidence, then copies will be made, one will be scanned and sent to you, and we will be handing them.
Okay.
You are wrong.
Ms. Dolan is leaving now with the statement. She'll scan it to you, Mr. Allison, and then we can give it to the Board members.
I just said that.
Or she can send it to all of you.
What's next?
Well, why don't you read the statement first?
My only correction would be it was on Moffett Street, it wasn't on Chase Hill.
On Moffett Street, not on Chase Hill.
So that's...
From what, what was his name, Officer Moody?
Yeah, he said on or near 241 South.
Okay.
Point of order, I perceive the...
pages now entered into the record.
Jason, have you reviewed it? Mr. Allison, have you reviewed it?
Yeah, sorry. Could I have another minute?
Thank you.
Okay. At this point, do either, are you both here for owners, keepers? Do either of you wish to make a statement of any kind or submit something?
Other than the fact that, you know, obviously, you know, our dog was out of the house, it wasn't one of the things where we allowed it out of the house. In fact, we have a kitty gate inside the house. We were loading up for a market, a go-market in Boston, vegetable market in Boston, so we were pulling coolers and stuff out of the house, which we have a gate so that they just, dogs can't come and go, so the dog was not even outside, not out, you know, so, you know, literally, the issue with the dog that I'm having, that we're talking about discussing, I tried to help out a friend that had a dog that was a rescue shelter dog. So I was bringing him up at the time when this dog was a puppy. Between my older dogs and the puppy, we could calm the dog down, get him some exercise at the farm, and it kind of backfired on us to the fact that, not realizing it, I also have chickens, about 400 chickens out in the back, and this particular dog was real aggressive until I finally started finding chickens that were dead because this dog was attacking them. Long story short, it's kind of made our dog have the same habit, so, you know, it kind of backfired, you know? It worked the other way. Having said that, this is part of what, you know, and I kind of know that small animals, squirrels, chickens, and unfortunately, their small dog, he sees it, he tends to get pretty excited about it. Over the gate, he went out and unfortunately, you know, and after, I firmly believed that it was the dog, and unfortunately, she was trying to care for her dog and grabbed the dog, and that's when she got bit. I firmly believe that the dog was not after her or any other human because the dog is super friendly to all, all humans you might say, but young, or small animals, you know, rabbits, squirrels and all that, because naturally, I have a big pen on the back that they run loose in a pen, and anything that's in that pen, you know, he'll just tear into now. So I'm having, been having a tough time correcting him, so I just kind of want, I think that's kind of an important matter, that it's the animal that he was, that he goes after and not humans. So having said that, I just kind of wanted to get that out there, and unfortunately, you know, we know each other very well, you know, kids all grew up, you know, so I'm firmly, you know, sorry that something like this happened. You know, we were taking what I thought was appropriate steps to make sure the dog doesn't, you know, get out or whatever, and it was one thing, he was in the house, and literally, he looked out the window and saw the dog and over that fence quicker than, he can run, he can run the length of the field in seconds, you know, so once he's off and running, it's quick. So I had to talk with the dog officer. First thing we're doing, appointment's on Monday, the dog's going in to be neutered. Hopefully, that'll take a little, little starch out of his drawers. I don't know whether it'll actually happen, but, you know, he's a good dog in the sense of, for human-wise, but his aggressiveness, he's just coming into a year and a half, a year, two years, so he's, you know, even with my other bloodhound, he tends to, you know, he's standing up for himself now. So, you know, whether having the procedure is going to help, I don't know, but I, you know, that's step number one. Step number two, now that rather than, you know, just a kid gate, you know, he will be locked in a room when we're trying to get stuff loaded, you know, to go to market, I mean, you know, you know, we go to any extent not to have this happen, it's never happened before with all the dogs that we've owned at the farm, unfortunately, it did happen. And that's all I can say towards the dog.
And I'm sorry, just for the record, you are Stephen Mudgett? Okay. That's fine. Just making sure. Thank you.
I appreciate that. I say, I do have my own and he's kind of considered the mayor of the farm. I mean, people come, I mean, he's got, talks to people, believe it or not, I mean, it's kind of a common code, if you ever been up to my place, and people actually look and want to know where he is. So I didn't want any situation where somebody sees a bloodhound, that phone calls him, made because he will be loose along with my little Old English Bulldog, because they go with my Jamaicans in and out of the field. So that's why it was important that we distinguish that there's two bloodhounds and two different people here.
And are you Stephanie? Do you have anything you'd like to add or say?
No, pretty much my dad.
Okay.
Said what needed to be said.
Ms. Tower, if you wouldn't mind just answering a couple of questions for the Board. So the first, has there been any prior offense of, for this dog?
No.
And could you just describe your involvement in the matter?
Yep. I got a call from Shoba Dispatch saying that the incident had just happened. All the party, everything was over with when Dispatch called me. I came right over. I spoke with Stephanie, asked her what had happened. Couple days later, like we've already discussed, Mr. Kirkpatrick reached me through the Police Department. I had reached out to him each day, not the original day because I don't, everyone's at the hospital, they're just trying to deal with things, they didn't need to hear from me. But I call out on a block line, so it wasn't going through to Mr. Kirkpatrick's phone, it was phone tech for a bit. So like the chief said, he was able to reach me through the office and we spoke then. That says Animal Control. As animal inspected, there's a 10-day quarantine when a dog breaks the skin by tooth or by claw. That was done. The dog was released from quarantine at 10 days. I went back to the house to make sure it didn't have any signs of rabies, even though the dog has a current rabies vaccination that's good till 2027.
Does the Board have any questions?
So I do not, but just if you're okay, Ralph, I'm going to go to Jason since he's online first to see if he has any questions, and then if you have any, we'll go to you. Mr. Allison?
Mr. Chair, mine will be for Villas-Tower. Are we at the time where, I know, I heard someone, she was giving her input as to her recommendation, we don't have time to talk about that, or should I wait for this time?
I think we, we're going to see if there's a round of questions before we ask for any recommendation.
Yeah, all my questions will be around that, so I will defer for now. Thank you.
Okay. Ralph?
Mr. Mudgett, how tall is the fence that the dog comes from?
A kid gate's probably about two and a half feet.
Two and a half feet, so that's pretty easy.
Oh, you can jump over it, but typically, you know, that's, it suffices, they know not to go over, but like I say, you add a small animal and he gets real excited and, you know, it's just one of those things that, you know, we were up going loading at, you know, six o'clock in the morning and usually, because we got to get out by eight, and just kind of wrapped up and usually that suffices and, you know, obviously, it didn't. So we will have to take different measures and basically lock him in a closed room or something when we're hauling things in and out and trying to get ready for stuff, because it's just, you know, you think you got all your bases covered, but, you know...
Did you say he was actually in the house and came out?
Oh, he was in the house, correct. Correct. And in my house, kind of, you enter my house, it's a mudroom, and you step up one step, it's kind of what used to be an old kitchen, which is now kind of just a gathering room. And there's a double window, and my dog's like to actually sit on it, even my other bloodhound, he's the one that kind of started it all. He just sits here and watches everybody. And there's, you know, just kind of tell you, there's a big old white fluffy dog, and we call him Fluffy, that walks every morning at five, six o'clock in the morning. And he always knows and talks, and those two actually are like friends, because at one point, they met us outside, whatever. So the young one did get that habit, you know, we sit on the chute box that I had made, however, and that's how he notices whatever's coming down the road. And I mean, a lot of people walk Moffett Street, Chase Hill, if it's just individuals themselves, it's not an issue. If there's a dog, he has an issue, and especially the smaller, because he relates to smaller objects, you know, and I'm aware of that, and like I say, you know, we were, what I thought was taking proper steps and having had an issue up, you know, he's gone on two years and we haven't had any problem in two years. Well, we had a problem, so now we had to regroup and do what's necessary.
Is, how does the dog exit the house? I mean, I assume he doesn't have, you know, he can't open the door, so... Are you asking how to get from inside that house outside? Leapt over a gate?
When he come into my house, from the outside, actually, coming through a door, it's in my mudroom, that door was open.
Ah, okay.
We have all the coolers, we wash all our vegetables in the sink and what have you, and stuff was all lined up, you know, including our eggs. We have a big refrigerator because my daughter does eggs, and so we have all cooler, 30, 40 dozen, something that we take to market, so we drag the stuff out the door. And I had just gone in and around one of the other rooms to get ready, head down, because I'd been up since 5:30 getting stuff ready, and my wife and my daughter were dragging the coolers out, going to the truck for my guys to load onto the truck, and that's when he saw the people, jumped the fence and...
So the door was open, that's the key thing. The door was open, so...
Door was open, he just went right over that fence, and, I mean, I have a five-foot fence out back that pretty much you can almost clear that at a stand.
Sure.
So...
Thank you.
That's how it happened.
Thank you. Ms. Hodges?
So Ms. Tower, if you have any recommendations for the Board to consider, I would happily hear it now.
So this whole hearing is on Mass General Law 140, Section 157, and there's actually things to choose from in here. Some of the things that I thought might help in this instance, it says that the dog needs to be confined to the house, which it was, but the way it got out of the house needs to change. I understand. I was there, the mudroom and the gate. As far as I want to add, I agree with Mr. Mudgett about the people. Both, all three of his dogs were on the other side of the gate, and I'll be honest, my dog would have acted way worse than his dogs. They sat there nicely, one of them actually laid down. Nobody was tense, there was no growling, no barking. I'm a stranger in their house. The dogs were well behaved toward people. However, obviously, now we know that the dog can't get out the door anymore. So it says securely confined in the house. That, it doesn't say how it has to happen. I think Mr. Mudgett had an idea of keeping the dog in a secure room while this is going on. I don't believe there was a gate at that door. I don't know if a glass door wanted to be added and then the dog wouldn't have to be in a room. That, I guess, would be up to them. So I'm going with this one here about being confined indoors. When the dog's outdoors, this is a, section's more than one, so if the dog's left in a pen, I'm not sure how the dog's left outside, I guess is the best question. If the dog is brought outside and put in a pen, the pen has to be followed with these rules. If the dog's just brought outside in a fenced area, then I would skip down to the next one that says that the dog has to be muzzled and on a strong leash. It says minimum tensile strength of 300 pounds and three feet long. That's just taking him outside. In the house, he can remain how he remains. Outside, things just have to be secured.
Wait, she's giving her, wait, so she finished her information, sorry.
There's another section that, um, wants to show that the dog isn't confused with other dogs, which I think is a good thing, since mentioned that there are two dogs very similar at the house, same breed. Um, photograph of the dog, and I'm not sure if the dog may already have a microchip. Um, though, this section here gives you a choice of different things, I don't think more than a photograph and a microchip would be necessary. And the last, I think it's the last one, the last part is altering the dog, which they had been discussing to do anyways, and they, since, uh, since the quarantine released, they have made the appointment to do so.
All right, so let me, is that your, are you finished?
Yes, sir.
All right. Uh, so, I'm going to see if I summarized it, and then you let me know. Um, confined in a home, went outside, muzzled and on a, an appropriate leash of appropriate strength, uh, 300 pounds, I think you said, but, uh, photographed and microchipped, just from identification purposes, is that right? And then, as you mentioned, Mr. Mudgeon already said they're altering the dog.
Monday?
Monday?
Yes.
Um, that is the sum and substance of your recommendation, so I don't...
Yes.
Just more than this qualify anything. Um, do you have anything else, we'll clarify before I turn to the boards?
Well, one thing, because we hadn't talked about this, my dog will not be muzzled and will not be chained, that I can guarantee you. I will have a fence to prove that I will hold that dog, if it doesn't, then something will be done with the dog. But I will not muzzle a dog and have a dog on a leash, will not happen. Being in animal control for 15 years myself, I said I've seen plenty of dogs that run a leash, and it's not a good thing.
I hear you. Uh, we're just going with what her recommendation is right now, we're hearing what her recommendation is, and then it's our determination to...
If I can just clarify, I didn't mean tie him out on a leash.
No, I understand.
It's a handheld walking leash when needed to be taken out, if not in the kind of a fence with a floor and a roof, so that's kind of the choices thing.
So, if the dog were being taken for a walk around the neighborhood, you're suggesting, you wouldn't do that, but you're likely not to take the dog on a walk around the neighborhood.
Enough, Lena, I don't need a walk around.
Right. Okay. Um, all right, uh, thank you. Before you get down, uh, Chuck, before you said, um, want to make sure, Mr. Allison, you had questions?
Yes, Ms. Tower, thank you for this. Um, so, just to clarify, I'm, I'm hearing that you're not recommending the dog be put down, is that accurate?
That's correct.
So, my question then is, what, in your opinion, and I'm asking you to like speculate here, because this is obviously the first time that I've been in this, what would need to happen for you to recommend the dog to be put down, like what's missing from this situation?
Unithenizing the dog is like last option, there is many options prior to that in the MGL, to try to correct, um, from keeping the dog and getting out again, which we've done for in the house and while the dog's outside.
I'm going to just ask that we don't do a lot of hypothetical, and ask the dog officer to opine on a circumstance that's not before us right now.
So, Mr. Chair, why I, why I need this is because, you know, going through the, going through the complaint and going through the pictures, in my opinion, it's, it's severe, and, and I'm just trying to understand what's missing, because I, 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 I don't think it's reasonable that, that people should walk down the street and, and something like this can happen.
Understood, I'm just asking you rephrase it rather than asking her, um, to answer hypothetical. Um, are there circumstances, in the past, have there been circumstances under which you've recommended putting the dog down? If so, what were they?
I have not recommended to put a dog down, and I've been through quite a few hearings, and this is the first time it's happened with this dog. And things inside and outside are recommend, I'm recommending to prevent it from happening again. The step that I'm not making them up and thinking them up there here is choices from the state.
Right. Um, how many years have been done?
Twenty-five.
Right, thank you.
All right, that's my question, thank you, Chair, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Gifford, do you have any questions?
No.
Okay. Uh, Ms. Hodges, at this time, what is the board's responsibility?
Uh, well, the, um, both the complainant and the owners get a chance to make any final statements, either relative to anything that you heard this evening, or anything that you would like the board to consider.
My concern is that it does not happen to anyone else, and I don't believe if it's on a leash, you could hold the dog back.
Right.
Maybe steam, but I, I don't think you could, you can't kill that dog.
This, this wasn't just like an ankle bite or a nip on the knee, this was a brutal mauling of the forearm, where we pulled the flap out, and you could see muscle underneath, a very deep, a deep cut that required stitches, and now she's got nerve damage in her hand that might never go away. Uh, so, I, I don't...
But they're definitely right, it was after the dog, holding the...
Yeah, but we're just walking a dog down the street, I mean, that's reasonable, we should be able to walk down without a dog coming out, and I just don't have confidence that they, they're responsible dog owners.
Okay, all right. Um, do you have any final comments? Okay. Kate, what's next?
Uh, so now, um, the board can choose to deliberate now, you can, um, choose to deliberate and vote now on whatever your recommendation is, or you can, um, deliberate and send your recommendations, uh, to me, uh, not to deliberate via email, but for us to be able to issue a determination from the board within 21 days, um, or you can, uh, call a special meeting where you can reconvene to both deliberate and discuss a resolution to this matter if you need time, um, to review anything else, or time to think about what you've heard this evening.
I have an inclination and a direction to go, but I, I yield to my colleagues if they wish to deliberate today, uh, we can do that, we have a relatively packed agenda, and a hearing that was called for five minutes ago, but this is an important thing to consider. Um, uh, does anyone have a need to deliberate now? I mean, I'd like to, I, I will say, I personally like to sit with it, um, and give it time and deliberate either later in this meeting, or in a special meeting just before our next select board meeting, which would be within the 21-day window, to give it the due deference it deserves, because both the complainants and the dog owners deserve, um, that time and attention, but it's the will of the board, so if the board wishes to deliberate now, we can. Ralph?
Okay. Uh, I'm prepared to make decisions this evening, and I'm also prepared to respect your request, in fact, I'm inclined to respect your request, because any time a member would like more time to sit, I think we should, we should respect that, so...
Jason, your thoughts, I'm open to either.
Yeah, I think I'd like to sit, I mean, I, I didn't do anything to me, because it just, it feels very powerful, so I would propose a single item special meeting. Uh, my question to Mr. Chair and Ms. Hodges would be if it requires another public hearing, or it's just a, like, regular...
Just a regular, but out of, um, out of courtesy, I would let the parties know that it would be, uh, on the agenda and when it would be on the agenda.
Yeah, I'd probably propose a single, similar meeting agenda, special, because it just feels like a good...
Yeah. That's, having, had we, just so the public knows, we get none of this information before we show, um, we don't know anything other than what's in, what you all knew by reading the agenda, what was posted publicly for the hearing notice, and that's on purpose and, and good. Um, but I know for myself and Ralph, this is our first nuisance dog hearing, uh, in this time on the board, I had one in the nineties, when it was very long time ago, and, uh, I do think we need to give the complainants the due deference of taking time and sitting with it, and, um, uh, and then deliberating in a public meeting, and that will be the only item for that piece of the meeting, and then we can move forward. So, um, with that, uh, we thank, you, yes, sir?
Two questions. Uh, if this is the case, and it's possible that you're going to request the dog to be put down, um, does the board have issue if you do not go here with the procedure to have a maneuver, uh, because it's not a cheap, it's not a cheap thing to go through, so to go through that, and then you got to turn around and...
Right.
And, by 21 days and say we want the dog terminated.
Right. I'm, I'm not going to suggest what you do or do not do with your animal or your animal, um...
I just want to, I want to...
I would just, right, I mean, I'm not going to...
Kind of choosing that avenue to hopefully carry this dog down, and, you know, I'm kind of being accused of, you know, incapable of stuff, so, you know...
My, I'm just saying, I, I can't take recommendations due because I'm one member of a board, uh, and we are going to deliberate in earnest at the next meeting. Taking this gavel away and just sitting here is Steve talking to Steve, um, it's never a bad idea to try to take steps in the right direction, and if you're hearing that's a recommendation of the air officer, then that's a decision you'll have to make, um, but our ruling won't come until, uh, we have a chance to deliberate, so it's entirely up to you.
When you're posting a meeting, what is, because I found out about this on Friday, kind of through, right mind you might say, we actually contacted the dog officer, and she had no recollection that there was an actual meeting going on till likely Saturday, which we turned the phone on, so, this is like, kind of...
Well, we can, we can tackle that, that's a different meeting, though, than the one we're currently in, so we're going to wrap up this hearing, um, thank all the parties, and we can dig into scheduling questions and why you weren't, um, or how the notification might have gone out, but, um...
So how will we, how will we, just my question is, how will we be notified then? Because we weren't notified before.
We notify the dog officer, the dog officer would notify you, the dog officer and I exchanged
emails with the commissioner, uh, shortly after it happened, I was out last week, and so I have the email where we talked about the date.
So, you will, someone from town will notify you of the date, our next select board meeting?
I'm happy to email you, though, if you'd like to provide me with your email address.
Appreciate that.
Yep.
I can't say that it's going to happen just before this one, because it may happen sooner, but Monday, August 5th is our next regularly scheduled select board meeting, so if we did, it would be prior to as a special standalone, but we could do it at another time, a little of the board, which we'll discuss later when we do something. Okay, thank you. Now, um, we have a poll hearing, uh, for joint or identical poll locations, Seven Bridge Road, uh, National Grid, hello, long hair?
Oh, there you are.
Usually you're on the screen.
Yeah.
Um, great, why don't you come forward while reading the hearing notice?
Sure.
Here it is, Seven Bridge Road, National Grid to install one, uh, JO pole on Seven Bridge Road, beginning at a point approximately zero feet northwest of the center line of the intersection of Seven Bridge Road and Creamery Road, and continuing approximately, hey, Kelly? Continuing approximately 50 feet in the northwest direction, installing one JO pole approximately 50 feet northwest from the intersection of Seven Bridge Road and Creamery Road. So, uh, we have to, that is the hearing notice, is there a motion to open the poll hearing?
No.
Is there a second?
No.
Okay. Uh, our poll hearing is opened at 6:16 PM on Monday, July 15th, apologies for the delay. Thank you for your time. Ms. Hodges?
Uh, this is a new pole being proposed in order to serve a new customer building of property at 42 Seven Bridges Road, uh, that pole needs to be installed in order to come across the road, essentially, split the span in, in half, it's a long span to begin with, so pole seven dash five zero, basically seven and a half, is splitting pole seven and eight.
Can you tell us your name and...
Oh, Colton Marshall, uh, from National Grid.
Thank you. Okay. Any questions for Mr. Marshall? Mr. Allison?
None.
Mr. Gifford?
None.
And I have none. Um, okay, those of you who are very compelling.
Good.
Very good argument, I have to say this every time, it's a poll hearing, my dad was a lineman for Mass Electric, I put up polls 31 years, so, um, you don't tell Mass Electric to go by my old house, because there were a lot of poles and proscers.
I won't tell.
Yeah, please don't. Um, all right, is there a motion to grant the poll placement as defined in the notice, and as Mr. Marshall just laid out?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor say aye, Mr. Gifford?
Aye.
Mr. Allison?
Aye.
Mr. Kerrigan, aye. Congratulations. We were 11 minutes late, but we got it done in a minute, so you're all set. Okay, thank you. All right, uh, at this point, we have public comment, uh, as is always the case, um, public comment, you're, uh, can come up to the podium if you're in the room, if you're online, please put up a digital hand, we'll go to the folks in the room first, then we'll go to people online, um, and we will, uh, the Supreme Jewish Court tells us, we can't tell you how nice to be to each other, but it tells us we can limit how long you can say things, so we set the timer for two minutes, um, any residents allowed to come up and offer their public comment. So, we'll open public comment in the room first, anyone, anyone, any, Roy, Roy's going to be at the podium a lot today, um, remember, you have to, be a resident, state your name and address.
Yes, Roy Rezak, 125 Harbor Road, speaking as a private citizen. I saw the agenda for today's meeting, and the item titled, "Discussion on Eliminating Virtual Participation From Select Board Meetings." I would like to stand before the select board and before my fellow residents here in the town, and indicate that I think that the virtual participation in select board meetings has been a real benefit and a boon to understanding what goes on in town, and to participation in town, and is a very definite benefit for many of the working parents who couldn't come here by themselves, the whole issue of arranging for, you know, childcare, et cetera, these kinds of things are difficult, let alone travel time, et cetera. So I would like to go on, on record in strong support of continuing, um, to allow, um, virtual participation for select board meetings, allowing people to express things during open comment session and these kinds of things. So I, it has my strong support to continue that and not eliminate it. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, also, I forgot to remind folks, I'll raise my hand when you're at one-minute mark, but Roy was right at the one-minute mark, um, so it's not intended to try to stop you, it's just to tell you you have one minute to go. Susan?
Susan Mania, 96 Grant Way, uh, I'm just curious if there's a particular reason we had somebody that was stepping up to want to be on the ConCon Committee?
Can't hear you.
Someone requested to be and sent an email to be on the ConCon Committee, but, um, that person was not listed for the agenda tonight, and I'm just wondering if you can speak to that as to why, uh, they would not be considered for the very next, uh, select board meeting. And in addition to that, echo what, what Roy indicated in terms of continuing with the select board meetings, um, there are people like, uh, Sarah Arnold, who do reporting directly from, you know, this meeting, and watching it after the fact would not accommodate her disability, she needs to be able to report the next day, so, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Uh, just to point out, and I'm, I'm not, not addressing your question, but it is, we've got to be, this is public comment period, not public Q and A period, um, if I were answering your question, I would just say, um, that we've addressed your first concern over email, and that will be taken care of at the next meeting, but I'm not addressing your public comment and Q and A, because that's not what these meetings are for. Anybody else in the room, before we go online? There is somebody with a symbol online, I can't see who's kind of hand up. Who is that? I can't see.
Russ.
Okay, Russ, take it away.
Hi, uh, Russ, thank you, Russell, listening for High Field Drive, I'm here to enter a comment for item 538 agenda, which is the discussion on eliminating remote participation in, uh, select board meetings. I'm not sure what the rationale is for discontinuing remote participation in meetings, but I wanted to speak to the positive impact that remote participation has had in meetings. Uh, first, the option to participate in meetings remotely is extremely valuable to professionals who have business before your board. Nearly all towns in Massachusetts now allow remote meeting participation, and for engineers, attorneys, and the other professionals who work with municipalities, it's allowed them to dial into meetings from their office or home, and in their case, it can save them many hours and miles of commuting each month. Removing the option to participate remotely in May Castor would be extremely conspicuous among those professions, as it's almost ubiquitous across the state today. It's also very valuable for residents, who, again, it's vital for seniors and for, uh... and for people who otherwise don't have the time to sit through many hours of meetings just to add in online. Remote participation is in, I'm sorry, I was told that the proposal to eliminate remote participation resulted from our participants swearing in the recent meeting. And one member of your board distributed a message that it exposed the town and SLCTV to fines, which is not correct. Like, the laws about profanity that your board members cited apply only to broadcast television. Right from the XTC website, it says that the XTC rules for profanity do not apply to cable, satellite TV, or satellite radio because they are subscription services. So please don't discontinue remote participation. It's useful to help the residents, it's customary for professionals, and the risks that you're addressing are applicable. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? In person or online? Don't see anyone. All right. Thank you, everyone. Public comment is now closed. So we will invite now up for the Tax Fairness Committee, Presentation and Findings, Mr. Rezak. This is the final presentations and findings of the Tax Fairness Committee. Roy, please take the podium. I, I know you sent a lot of information. I'm gonna ask you to give the executive summary version of your presentation, not the full business school explanation. We'd like a very brief one so that the board can ask any questions they might have, and then we can move on to our agenda. But I do appreciate the
I just sent you and make you co-host, so you should be able to share.
Okay, one moment.
Any luck that worked?
I'm sorry, you sent me an email? You sent me?
No, she just
Should just say where Town of Lancaster is making you co-host and you hit okay. I can do it again?
You might just, you might have just missed it.
Well, actually, you must have done something because it said now I just have to remove you as co-host, which I don't want to do, so maybe hit the share.
Oh, boy. Um, hang on a second.
Would someone like to help Mr. Rezak?
Yeah, I don't see that.
So now you can share your screen, see on the screen?
Yeah.
So now you're going to click on wherever your, is that your PowerPoint for this thing?
Yes.
There you go.
Everett? Everett? Can you turn the air conditioning down because it's literally blowing right in my eye?
Turn it off.
Yeah. Sorry, is that how you get impeached? It's just literally blowing directly in my face and it's like drying out my confidence.
It's telling me.
Jason, if I were here, I could hide behind him, but he's not here.
Better.
I know. It's close enough. Roy, take it away whenever you're ready.
Yes, I'm trying to. I may have to defer for a moment or two. We seem to be having a few technical problems. Can you give me one more hand with it, maybe?
Yep.
Right?
You got it?
It's a thing, but I may have to restart Zoom because it had a
Uh, where? Oh! Just like that.
Huzzah.
Did it?
This is one of, where's it, is it coming up? Your screen share. Okay, then. Can I do this?
There you go.
Okay.
All right.
All right. So this is the second three-month report and the final report of the Tax Fairness Committee. You can see the members there. Here is the outline, review mission and charge.
Okay, give me a moment. There's no zero chance I can say this. Can you? Yeah, never mind. Ralph, I'll go look at, no, I'm gonna look at Ralph's. That's me, also couldn't. You're very kind, I think I can read that. Go ahead.
We will do a quick, one-slide summary of the whole February 5th meeting. That will be my executive summary of that, Stephen.
Thank you.
Then we'll cover progress since then, our next steps. Briefly, we'll talk about the three missions that were part of the committee mission statement that was given to us by the town as well as select board, and then we'll talk about conclusions and next steps. So here's a review of the mission. I won't read it all to you. The first part of it is approved, is approved by the town at the annual town meeting, Article 16 on May 3rd, 2023. The second statement is slightly reworded by the select board and is what was posted on our website as our final mission and charge. And then what we did as a committee, we took that and just organized it a little bit in terms of three tasks. The first task, mission task one, is to examine the fair allocation of tax burdens. You see the wording that we used, we summarized that to indicate that mission statement. Mission two, alternatives to a reduction of reliance on property taxes. And then mission three is to reduce the impact of property taxes on seniors. So moving along then. So a brief review of the February 5th meeting. At our first meeting of the Tax Fairness Committee meeting back on October 25th of 2023, it seems like a while ago now. We prioritized and said we wanted to possibly, if we could, develop a senior means-tested property tax exemption, which is a long mouthful, which we will summarize from now on by the letters SME, all right? We wanted to get that ready, if possible, for the May 2024 annual town meeting. And we prioritize mission task three. What I gave you as the third mission on the first, on the early slide, we now bumped that up to the top in terms of the order. We would work, work on that. We did research about why seniors move. We, we were able to determine that seniors move when care needs determine that they need to move, not because of financial reasons. It's the dominant reason. It's not saying some people don't move because of finances, but the dominant reason is they move when care needs indicate. The second thing we did is we looked at eight other towns that had already done an SME. We tried to learn from them and not reinvent the wheel. We discovered that those towns had significant financial and demographic differences and that we needed to study some more rather than just copy what they did. We also determined that most age groups are similar, similarly housing financially stressed, okay? And particularly maybe the sandwich generation, which is those who are supporting both children as well as parents. They may be the most housing financially stressed, and we should keep that in mind as we looked at how to benefit these groups. It was clearly a huge win, the Massachusetts Circuit Breaker, which Kelly and others have been pushing for years. We found some residents that not know about it. We were helpful in getting that word across. But this is a big benefit to those seniors, significant money. It's no cost to us. This is basically, to put it, to use a phrase, this is like a free lunch for our seniors and for the town. It doesn't cost us anything directly, and the fractional income tax increase is like a tenth of a percent or less. And then late breaking news, the governor said, oh, I'm gonna come up with a better simplified approach for an SME proposal. That's gone to the legislature. We currently think that will take another two years. It was already a two-year process. This has just opened up a whole uncertainty there, and we have set that down, put that on hold. Talk about that at the end. And additional communications to seniors were what we concluded were the next most important things we could do. So that's a summary of that whole first meeting. I'll move along. If there are any questions, please stop me, raise a hand. Jason? Right. Indicate that, all right? Moving along. We said next steps, we would work with COA, HHS, LCC on the Circuit Breaker program. We talked with Kelly. She had a good program, and you may have seen the flashing signs at either end of Main Street. It, it got the word out and we, she wound up signing up all the slots that were available for free tax consultation. In this report, we said we would provide for you information on what's called tax deferral, which is a state program, and related tax financing approaches and recommendations, and start into tax fairness. We will provide, cover research findings and recommendations. And we will additionally provide in this report alternatives to residential real estate taxes and final conclusions, recommendations in our final report. So to understand taxes a little bit more, it's important to understand what our, what our residents and taxpayers are saying. Here are some quotes from town meetings in terms of what people have said about taxes. Several people said, and I quote, "They can't afford to pay anymore in taxes. These taxes that are going up, we can't afford it." Other people asked, "Why are we doing a proposition two and a half override? This is a problem." In some places, there was a rejection of regional school district budgets as requests being too high. And one senior said, they claimed that since they moved into the town 1995, a while ago, their annual property taxes have soared from $895 to almost $8,000, an increase of 790%, which he says is like paying almost $700 a month rent to the state to live in the house that you own. Now, these taxes, I'm sorry, these statements could have come from Lancaster, but let's talk about where they really did come from. The first one came from Berlin, Mass, just down the road, okay? The second one came from West Bollston and also from Berlin. The third one came from Sterling and Berlin, which seems to be a hot, hot town for tax payments here lately. And the last one came from Montana, okay? I was surprised by that one. I don't think of Montana as the hotbed of high taxes, all right? Well, it's important to note that there are the references, and Jason, you've asked us to show our work in the written report, which you will have a copy of. We have footnotes that are listed there, and they show the references from where we got this information. It's important, it's important to note, all of these could have come from Lancaster, but none of them did. When you look at this, basically, when you look at the taxes that we're paying, I did a quick study, did a benchmark on five years of taxes in Lancaster and the neighboring towns. There were all the towns that touched Lancaster with the exception of Harvard because of some, they had to import some data. And when you look at this information, I've sorted it from highest to lowest to get a little more clarity on what the meeting might be here. You look at, look at this data and from left to right, in essentially every town, in every year, the taxes go up. That's the fundamental observation one makes when you look at real estate taxes, is that taxes go up. Quick note, Clinton and Berlin have what's called a split tax rate. I won't go into more detail about that tonight. Steve, we, we'll talk about that later. What I also did was I took that information and I standardized it and normalized it by looking at the rate of inflation. What you see here is a five-year rate of inflation, which was 19.2% in the last five years, 2019 to 2024, Consumer Price Index. And you look at all of these towns. What's interesting to note is that all of the data essentially clusters around the rate of inflation, the tax, the tax increases that we've seen. And you notice that the Massachusetts statewide number is about 80% of the rate of inflation. The Lancaster number, 101% of the rate of inflation. And that's about as close, okay, as we're gonna get. And then a couple of other towns, Clinton and Stowe and Berlin, were above the rate of inflation for their taxes. Well, here are some key points. I won't go over all of them to kind of speed this along. But you see, it's clearly that the data is, the taxes are, residential property taxes are rising, and they're going up very much in tracking with the rate of inflation. And I'll leave that at, I'll leave that slide at this point. So that's the key point. And the fact that the taxes are rising across not only Lancaster, all of the surrounding towns, and even Montana, okay? Indicates that it's not a Lancaster-only problem, it's not a Massachusetts-only problem. It is a national problem. Everybody has this issue in terms of taxes going up, all right? So, and at this point, it appears the problem is more generic and probably related to inflation. And the second point is the K through 12 education costs. That's another driving point. And understand that those costs, 80% of those costs are personnel-related. So those are driven by inflation, too. Moving on. So we've said it's not only Lancaster, but it's other towns, too. Just a quick note on this slide. Our municipal government costs for, in effect, everybody who works for the city. You know, safety, all right? For all of our, the people who work in this building, for all of the DPW workers, that kind of stuff, is about one-third of our overall taxes every year. Two-thirds of our taxes come from, are from the school costs, all right? And that's a big, a big issue. We have to monitor that and manage that well. And the cost of the new high school will, will be higher and will increase even that. So the question is, we can't stop rising taxes. How do we help seniors pay these taxes? A little bit, I remember a comment when I was learning to sail. I can't control the wind, but I can, I can set my sails. We're gonna talk about how seniors can set their sails and what they can do. Now, this slide basically covers, recommendation is, seniors should apply for the circuit breaker and any other tax exemptions. There's a reference there, a website to go to for other tax exemptions. Investigate, we wanted to investigate deferring taxes and alternative sources for near-term payment of taxes for senior citizens from retirement income and assets. And essentially, all of that is gonna be predicated on an important point called the appreciated value of a home in Lancaster. Question is, how, what, what does that mean? How are houses in Lancaster appreciated? Because you can't do a tax deferral, for example, the state program, unless you have significant equity in your house and it has to be above, you can't get to the point where you've drawn down 50% of that equity. So the question is, what is the equity you have in your home? I did a, I did a model for the average, for the equity in an average, in the average home here. Hang on one second. Okay. This is a model of what someone buying a home in 2015 at the average price, I'm sorry, at the price of the average home in Lancaster would have, would have been. They would have bought a $293,000 house. They would have paid $58,000, $58,300 in cash in, and they would have had a mortgage for $233,000. 10 years later, basically this next year, that house that they bought for $293,000 is now worth, I'm sorry, I don't have the number right in front of me, but that's on the order of 500 and some odd thousand. And they had equity in the house of not only the $101,000 they paid in while paying their mortgage now, but $236,409 due to the average appreciation of a home here in Lancaster. Significant amount of money. And in effect, think of that as a return for having placed your home and your money into the appreciating land bank of Lancaster. As you go out in time, I won't read all the numbers to you, but you see that this goes up. In two, 10 years from now, they will have a net equity of $711,000, a substantial number. And come 2045, folks, this home and this, this family will have a net equity of $1,300,000. That's a tremendous amount of money and shows the return that Lancaster has provided for these folks. So when you look at this a little bit more, you see the following, this list.
You said the land that Lancaster provided them, is that what you said?
I'm sorry. The appreciated value that having their house in Lancaster has provided. Sorry. One second. Here are those numbers stated more precisely, and you see the amount of appreciation and the percentage of appreciation that being in Lancaster has given these folks. It's important to note, too, that as your house goes up in appreciated value, because of the way we do assess value, has to match market value. Not only will you have the privilege of owning a $1,300,000 house, you will have the responsibility of paying taxes on a $1,300,000 house, which in 2045, I estimate to be about $22,698. A big step up from the $5,469 you paid when you bought the house. So this is part of what's going on, folks. It's It's the increase in taxes, depreciated value, these kinds of things, are gonna drive the costs of taxes that we have to pay up. So the question is, how are we gonna cover these taxes, particularly and help senior citizens? We're not, we're not talking about average, or let's say, non-senior citizens at this point. We're just talking about senior citizens. Let's talk about some options that they can use. I will keep this quite brief. This is tax deferral summary. This is a Massachusetts program. Allows a senior to borrow money against their equity in their home. Borrow it, in effect, from the town. The town gives them an exemption. The town takes a lien on the house. And the senior can roll this over year after year, provided they qualify. Well, those are some of the pros, you can get some money. What are some of the downsides? The downsides for the town are, the town basically has to raise taxes on everybody else to cover this expense. We can't go to the bank and borrow it. We have to raise our, we have to raise taxes on everybody else. The other point is, from the taxpayer's point of view, their criteria are just flat out unrealistic. They say you can't have an income of more than $20,000 a year. Well, no one can live in Lancaster that I know of on $20,000 a year, okay? Now, we could change that, but when you look at this, oh, and I wanna make two other quick points. The interest rate on this is relatively high at 8%. And you lose the circuit breaker tax credit, which basically, one second, basically increases your taxes by about 41% by giving that up. Not a good trade-off.
Can we go to your, not the things you don't recommend, but the things you, can we go to the things you are recommending, not the things you're not recommending?
Okay, all right. So we don't recommend this, let's move on. Okay? Here's what we do recommend. Take out a reverse mortgage.
Hold on. The town's committee is recommending people take out reverse mortgages?
Town committee is, to be clear, the taxpayer should consider discussing reverse mortgage as a possible option with financial, legal, and tax advisors as well as family. I think we've couched it as best we can, but we, our best judgment is, this is something that should be considered, all right? It has a lot of benefits. It's relatively easy to qualify for. You have significant equity in your house, you should be able to get the mortgage. You can still get a circuit breaker payment back, so that saves you money. Speed question?
Yeah, so I guess my questions were, I thought this committee was gonna make recommendations to the town about things the town can do to help with tax fairness.
Okay, and the primary thing that the town could have done would have been around an SME proposal. However, the SME proposal was, was put on hold and is indeterminate right now because the government is proposal. We went forward to say, what can we do to help our senior citizens? This is a recommendation we're making, and you see how it is qualified, and we recommend that they consider only after discussion with qualified professionals, okay? All right. Quick point here is, this has a lot of positive benefits. You can use it not only for taxes, but you can borrow additional money, use it for medical or other repair costs or anything else you want to. And this is a little bit like, the phrase I've used here is spending your equity and getting returns on it too, because the fact that you borrowed money against it, the house still appreciates on its total value. This is a little bit like having your cake and eating it too.
Right. So I'm just, so I hate to make this point, just, it's, I don't, I know you all did a lot of work on this. What I don't want us to do is veer into an infomercial for reverse mortgages. Like, I just wanna, if the report is that the recommendation from the Tax Fairness Committee would have been the SME and got blocked, I totally understand that, I appreciate that. But this is, what I don't wanna have happen is the town recommend a financial tool that somebody could use, and then they come back at us and say they got cheated or something like that. I just, why would it be, this is not the charge of the committee. So I just wanna be very clear. Charge of the committee was not to recommend a financial tool for seniors that is outside of the government's control.
The financial, the requirement, let's go back and check that, okay? Because we understood, hang on a second.
I think it's just an option if somebody can't pay their current taxes.
Right, yeah. We, no, I look, I appreciate it as a valid option for many people in financial tight spots. We just have to be very careful what we say we recommend as a town, because that's not, because if, and I don't need to know this, but if one member of the Tax Fairness Committee happened to be a financial advisor who recommends reverse mortgages, that's a real problem if we're out there then recommending reverse mortgages as a town, so.
Okay, I think we tried to word it as carefully as we could, is, should consider after discussion with experts. We are not experts, we don't make any claim to that, and we tried to word it very carefully.
And the information's fantastic, and the presentation's great. I just, I feel like I have a job to, every now and again, throw my hand in the air and flag some things, so.
All right, and we view this as trying to help seniors manage those taxes that we couldn't eliminate. The other possibility is, I'll just make it real quick. You can take proceeds from investment and, in effect, use that account and use the appreciated gains from that at the market and cover it that way too. This is all just information for seniors in terms of what they can do. So, conclusion, seniors who live in Lancaster for 10-plus years have substantial equity and are not house poor. We should not use that phrase for anyone who's lived in Lancaster for a significant period of time. They are house-rich, literally, and the data is there, okay? And the question is, how to help them make access to that funds if they choose to do that? All right, now. So, the first Tax Fairness Committee report back in February, and this one up to this point, we have all focused on helping seniors, all right? And everything we have done is been trying to help seniors figure out how to pay their taxes. We estimate it's about 80% of our total effort that we focused in on trying to help seniors, so we did a substantial amount, because that was clearly a strong need and a strong point from the Select Board in terms of what group to help was to help seniors. We're now gonna shift gears and go from Mission Three, and we're gonna go back up. I'll take any questions or comments here, but maybe I should move on and.
No, yeah, I just, we've, we're, how many more missions do you have to cover?
There's only two, there's only two more Mission Ten.
If there's any way we can.
Okay, I will, okay, we will move on here, okay?
Thank you.
The next one we need to do is the fair allocation of tax burdens. Here, here is, here is some information on this. Question is, we looked at is, are, is there an equitable distribution and assessment of real estate properties? Are our taxes unfairly incorrectly or inequitably assessed? Is really what we looked at. We did a review of the assessment process. Deborah Sanders was on the committee, she was a former assessor here in town. She went over it in a lot of detail with us. There are tremendous number of Massachusetts state requirements on assessment. Key point is that you have to assess a house 100% of fair market value. How that's determined, there is a long, long list of requirements in terms of how that's done. And there are multiple reports to the Massachusetts Department of Revenue. They do review the home assessments periodically. There's just a tremendous amount of review that goes on from the state. If you were trying to do this incorrectly or give someone a benefit, okay, you would have a tough time getting through this process, we believe. A big part of this is, not only is it highly regulated by the state, but a lot of it is done by a huge piece of software called CAMA, which stands for, hang on a second, ah, Massachusetts Certified, I'm sorry, Computer-Assisted Mass Appraisal, which the Department of Massachusetts certifies. You can only use certified programs to do this.
Can I just ask you, and just in the interest, this is fantastic information. Just from Mission One and Two, do you have, can you lead with the recommendations you're gonna make?
Can I lead with the recommendations we're gonna make?
Just so we know.
Let me finish this slide and then I'll see what I can do.
Yeah, I just, yeah.
Okay. So we not only reviewed the process, we actually went out and found out how many people appealed their tax appraisals here in Lancaster. Less than half a percent of Lancaster residents appealed their assessments. So we have concluded that the assessment process is fair, all right? Now, hang on a second, let me get quickest way to. That's the conclusions from that. This is some stuff we didn't address, we didn't do, look at a regression set of things. I'm sorry, I'm having trouble, there we go. Now, you wanna know our recommendations on this specifically? And I would like to spend a little more time on the third one in a minute, because I think there's some significant data there.
Is the third one the first one?
Beg your pardon?
Is the third one the first one, or?
No, I'm, I'm sorry.
You mean the new third one. The old third one was the first one, yes?
The third one, Mission Task Three is the first one we reported on for priority reasons.
You'd like to spend more time on Two.
Like to spend more time on Two?
The new Three. For those who keep track.
Okay, it has always been the same number two, all right? So, we feel that taxes are fairly assessed. Let me spend, I'll go quickly over this set of stuff, Steve, and then get to the conclusions, all right? Let's talk about alternatives to a reduction of reliance on property taxes. First point to cover is that, let me get this. Need to understand what order of magnitude are we looking for when we try to improve our tax situation? Our Lancaster budget of 28.5 for fiscal '25 averages over the last five years about a 3.6% increase, okay? Just due to inflation and the cost of goods and what we have to purchase and salaries and everything else, all right? That's about a million dollars, a little over a million dollars. The Lancaster new high school was gonna cost us an additional $3.4 million per year. It's come down to about $3.1. The Finance Committee is looking at what can they do to bring that down a little bit more. But overall, for next year, we've got a tax bill we're looking at between $3.8 and $4.2 million. So when we talk about, you know, increasing taxes and doing something to help, $10,000, $20,000, while it's nice, just isn't gonna cut it. We need bigger time help. We need to look at things that are on the order of a quarter million dollars to a million dollar range and look for things in that area. So the data question is gonna be, which revenue sources are significant in that area and which ones can be influenced to grow to that level? What are possible new taxes, because there are some new options? And what are proposed near-term increases in existing taxes we could use? To do that, what I did was I got information from Cheryl Garepley, who told, showed me what the revenue was for 2023, and I plotted it out, okay? Hang on a second. All right? And this is what I got. Now, first of all, when I first saw this, as most of you are saying, Roy, there's a problem with the plot. There's like, one, two, three, four, there's like 10 things on the right-hand side that are missing. The answer is, unfortunately, it's correct. Those 10 are so small that they don't show up here. You see right away that the big areas of taxes are in real estate taxes, motor vehicle excise tax and state aid, and things drop off very quickly. So what I had to do was, in this case, a chart didn't help me. We have to go look at the raw data. Here's what the raw data looks like. And I'm gonna take it from the bottom up. The blue stuff, these are what I call the insignificant 10. Remember on the prior chart, they didn't show up? They're the insignificant 10, they're so small. The next two areas are the motor vehicle excise tax and the state aid. These areas that we really can't influence very much. They're pretty much controlled by when people buy cars. And there are 350 other towns who want the state to give them more aid too. You know, us getting a whole lot more money isn't gonna happen. So that pretty much brings us down to four categories, of which the Select Board said, "We don't want you to raise residential taxes, real estate taxes." So that takes out the orange bar on top. Folks, we're down to three categories as the primary areas to get more money from. Three categories, commercial real estate, industrial real estate, and personal property, which means the equipment inside of a building or plant, that kind of thing. So there's not a whole lot of places to go to get this money. When you look at this, there are also some new possibilities. There's a cannabis tax, we could get 3% of revenue, but we'd have to have quite a bit of it for it to help us to bring it up to, you know, significant amount of money there. There was a mansion tax, homes over a million dollars, but that got killed by the state house just recently. Governor has made some proposals. Governor made some proposals. You see the increases that her proposal has made for us. We could get in the additional $73,000 next year based on if all of her proposals went through for increasing taxes on hotels and meals, et cetera, that type of thing. $73,000, well, it's nice, but it's not really helping a whole lot. Other things we can do, grants, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Just give, we can.
Okay, fine. All right, so, conclusion here is that there are no new sources of taxes and no proposed increase in current tax rates will significantly increase our revenue, all right? So what do we do, all right? To quote other people, who I've heard, I've heard this from Ralph, I've heard this from you, Steve, and Jason, I've heard it from you too. We have to broaden and diversify our tax base. This is the same conclusion Tax Fairness Committee came to. We've got to increase the total value of commercial industrial real estate to get additional taxes. Consider a split tax rate, we have to look at that. That's a December thing, and we're not gonna cover that tonight.
We did already, we did already.
For last year.
Well, we'll do it again, I'm sure.
Okay, all right. And retirement communities. The rationale here is retirement communities help us because of the total taxes they contribute to, to the town. They contribute, think about it, about 1/3 of the taxes to cover the town's expenses, and they contribute the 2/3 of their taxes as revenue, but they don't have any offsetting educational expense. They have no kids in school for retirement communities. So this is a big win for us. Consider some other sets of things, I won't go into a whole lot of time here on that, Stephen. Some key points about broadening and diversifying our tax base. We need to get more focused and specific about this. We've listed a set of things here about defining the problem, being proactive, expanding current businesses and areas, not just waiting for developers to come to us and asking for help and expediting permits and these kinds of things. Develop goals, strategy, and plan. Require periodic reports to the Select Board, all right? Et cetera, I won't go over all of those. The last one I will say is, given business uncertainties, develop and pursue multiple opportunities at all times. So I'm getting now, I'll just make a comment here.
Yeah, can you just get to the recommendations of the committee? It would be fantastic.
Okay. All right, I won't cover that. Okay, so overall, conclusions, all right? Mission One, it's not that tax, taxes are unfairly inequitably assessed or charged. It is that taxes continue to increase and will continue to do so primarily to inflation and school costs. Taxes are fairly assessed. We need to find significant sources of revenue other than residential real estate taxes. Those are the only ones we could find. Moving along. Mission Two, alternative to a reduction of reliance on property taxes. The main significant impact, broaden and diversify. Most other approaches won't make it give a significant benefit. We gave some specific recommendations here. And relative to senior citizens, everyone should be on circuit breaker if at all possible. Apply for exemptions, consider reverse mortgage, and Lancaster should investigate the governor's SME proposal in about two years. Finally, other recommendations. We propose an increase in senior tax workoff because the state has raised the maximum per participant from $1,500 to $2,000. So we recommended increasing that budget. And then finally, we say, because all three issues in the committee mission in charge had been addressed, we have meaningful progress on the SME proposal, wait governor's response, the legislature's response to the governor. We propose to disband the current tax committee. There's no point in us sitting around for a couple of years. And the final report, let's see, we have copies of the final report. Stephen, you asked for copies of written final report, okay?
Thank you very much.
Here are our written copies of the final report along with a copy of the slides.
Oh, thank you.
Posted online in a day or two when we get the last set of titles out of all of this, okay? And they will be in the town library and at the LCC. So, I ask you to thank the other members of the committee, and I'd also ask you to thank the members of the town, several of whom are listed here, who helped the committee in terms of the work that we did. It was a big help to get their input and their support. I will tell you, we even got an email last night at midnight from one of them, often with a question. So, we really appreciate the fact that many of them went above and beyond. So with that, that is the report, final report of the Tax Fairness Committee. And if you folks will pass the motion, we will disband. Thank you very much.
Thank you. First, yes, like, very big applause. This is incredibly thorough, as everybody watching and sitting here saw. You all deserve huge credit for the work you put into it. And I thank on behalf of Roy, the committee, and the town, and all the townspeople who also participated. So thank you very much for how thoughtful the approach was and detailed the report is and how creative your solutions are. So I appreciate that. So thank you all very, very, very much. Does the board have, well, before we disband you all, we're not letting you off the hook in case the board has any questions first.
Sure, any questions or comments?
Mr. Allison, do you have any questions for Roy or the committee?
Yeah, I have two questions for Roy. Roy, awesome work, thank you so much. I'm really glad that all of you could win the time and interview this. It really came across right here. One of your early slides, it was like a section one, it has a B, and it was talking about why people move.
Yes.
You would say that it is not financial, but due to care needs. Where did you get that data from?
Okay, we say that it is not, the primary reason is not financial, it is care needs. If you look in the written report, there should be a footnote that indicates where that came from. But we cross-correlated it several times with multiple reports available online as well as from discussions with Kelly and other senior, you know, professionals at the LCC. So that is the conclusion. It's not, and it is, the primary reason why people move is not financial, it is care needs. It's not to say there isn't a person or two who moves because of straight-up financial needs. It's that it's not the primary reason when you look across the whole room.
Yeah, I kind of read that, but yeah, I appreciate saying that.
Okay.
The next question is that you stated, you didn't think anyone in Lancaster had a yearly income less than $20,000? Did I hear that right?
I'm sorry, I think I.
They do.
Okay, I think I was indicating, I thought it was very hard to live on less than $20,000.
See that?
Okay, you know, I stand, I correct my wording then, all right? I think, yes, I'll stay by my statement, I think it's very hard to.
For homeowner.
For homeowner, for homeowner.
Not a renter.
Right.
Yes, right, to be clear, homeowner.
Not a big homeowner.
Right.
Not a lot of people.
So it's not the belief of the board, of the Tax Fairness Committee, that there are no residents in Lancaster?
No, we clearly didn't take a position on that, nor did we do any, you know, information gathering, find out what the low end of incomes might be, or even the high end. We didn't, we didn't do anything on that. It was not part of our mission task.
You guys want to make sure I read it right. I really, I really like the recommendation of increasing senior work, the program, or senior work off the program, I gave this call. It looks like it recommended 30%, 200 to 26, is that accurate?
Yes, roughly. It's basically from 1,500 per person, per participant to 2,000, which is the Massachusetts Legislature change. So it is right, it's a 33% increase.
The increase of $6,000 per year of opportunity there feels significant for people who need the financial assistance or something, so I'm glad. There was a slide at the end, I just, I wanted to make sure I read it right. Was one of the proposals looking into building an Apex-like facility, a Google site? Did I see that right?
Okay, and the comment was, this was a set of ideas, okay, that we were providing. And it was under the thinking outside the box. And that was, why couldn't we, you know, have discussions with Kimball's and get Kimball to think about not just doing a bigger ice cream place, but building a, you know, a multi-faceted entertainment arena and, you know, section that they could draw people to all year round? That would bring more money into them and bring more money into town, into the town. So it was a thinking outside the box kind of ideas, all right?
All right, so one way to, you know, think about economic development in a town, we try to.
Yes, right, right, we try to get, we try to give some specific examples rather than just leave it very vague and say.
But you, I just want to, I don't want to leave the townspeople, they understand, Kimball's is not looking to open something like this, that's what.
We have no information, we have no information that Kimball's is looking to open.
Anything other than what they have, right? I just don't want to.
I will make this comment, okay, to be perfectly clear. I have some information that came to me personally that Kimball's may be looking to, quote, "expand" their operation here in Lancaster, which I passed on our town plan.
We'll let them make that announcement then.
Right, right, I'm making no announcement here on Kimball's behalf.
Great.
I'll go on record saying I have no information about Kimball's.
None, all right.
Next is, you know, I speak to a lot of residents, a lot of seniors are in those residence who are talking about high taxes. I appreciated the slides, I kind of talked about, you know, maybe perspective. And I, I know a lot of the, you had a slide of the vines and like what towns were they from, and you had one about Montana. So I want to paraphrase a little bit here, and I do not want to put words in your mouth. So I'm going to read that, you know, read from my thoughts what I think I heard, and you tell me if I have it wrong, because I want to make sure I'm messaging residents accurately on your feedback.
Okay.
It sounded like your presentation was not just about Lancaster seniors. It sounds like it's basically all Lancaster residents, and the message you're giving is that taxes will, in Lancaster, they will always go up. And that's a good thing, because your house is appreciating in value and you will be house-rich. Is that the messaging?
I'm not sure I would quite phrase it that way. I think what we concluded was, is that taxes have historically and appear to be on track to always be going up. And that's a message to all Lancaster homeowners. Okay, that's point one. Point two is because of real estate market dynamics, your house is appreciating. A small part of the real estate market dynamics is, yes, inflation, all right? But it's not necessarily that inflation directly drives depreciation of your home. It is that the real estate market dynamics are what drive the appreciation of your home. The appreciation of your home gives you options to be able to cover and have a way to, you know, to spend for it, cover the taxes that are going up due to inflation. So you've got two things that are going on. One is inflation, and the other is real estate market appreciation, which gives you the option to have enough money to pay these increasing taxes. Is that clear?
Yeah, so what I'm taking away from that, the last couple of sentences, which is, market appreciation is a good thing, but the byproduct of it is higher taxes.
Well, yes, that's one of the byproducts of it, because as your house appreciates, independent of inflation, if your house appreciates, you will pay higher taxes because of the way houses are assessed here in Massachusetts, and essentially in all states.
All right, all right, thank you for that. Last thing, I think, last point here. So again, love the slides, love the detail. One thing I think is missing, and you may not be able to give it now, but I would love to give it, which is, you know, what is, what is the one to two sentences? One to two sentences that you would say to a Lancaster senior when they come up to you and they say, "I can't afford to stay in my family's generational home." What is the answer? Is it, is it, you need to find a way to leverage your home via things like, you know, vehicles like reverse mortgage, or it's happening everywhere, so we all have to deal with it? And I don't need you to answer right now, because I have a lot of data. There wasn't like the final message, like, what is the message to a senior that comes up to you and says, "Well, what do I do?", what's the answer?
All right, and I will exercise the Select Board prerogative to take time to deliberate with my fellow committee members offline and provide you a more thoughtful answer. I'm learning, Steve, I'm learning, you know?
I think if I could summarize, Jason, if there were elevators in this town, what's your elevator pitch to a senior?
Well, I tried, I tried to cut it down to a one-slide summary, all right? This is my one-slide summary of the whole.
I mean, I think what you've artfully done, the committee, and it's really, is that this is a complex problem.
Yes.
This isn't just encapsulated as taxes are really high, and so I can't stay. There's a complex problem with lots of reasons, none of which are anybody's one solution or that's the problem that they're causing, but the complexity of how we fund our town and how we tax our residents. And that's what I really appreciate about the presentation and the thoughtfulness which you approached it. There may be some aspects of it where we disagree on, but that's fine, that's America. The way in which you've shown how complex the situation is, I think, is sort of a beautiful part of this, but I agree with Jason, being able to have that quick summary.
Okay.
But, you know, sometimes complex problems. You want to hope for a really long elevator ride on that elevator.
Right, right.
Can I get finished?
Oh, sorry.
Yeah, just about done here. So Roy, I just want to explain why I'm asking for it.
Okay.
Why I'm asking, I'm not trying to put anybody on the spot. But when I, when I get asked that, my message previously I said is that Lancaster residents' ability to form a Tax Fairness Committee in their current sector is a priority for the town. That has been my answer. And now that the Tax Fairness Committee may be coming to an end, I want my new answer, and I want to advocate the work that this team has done. I don't know, based on all of the data and all of the information to see, it's going, there is no elevation to the end, so I'm looking for that.
Okay, to make sure we get it clear, Jason, could you write a brief, one-paragraph statement of what the question is? You know, so we're just.
I like that. I like, he asks you for an answer, you ask him for the same thing.
If I'm good, if we're going to answer the question, I want to make sure I understand the question. I don't want to misunderstand the question.
Jason, did you hear Roy's question?
I will, I will send you, I will send you my question, Roy, absolutely, but it's as simple as a Lancaster resident comes to you and says, "How do I stay in my generational home and can't afford taxes?"
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Gifford.
Very briefly, thank you. I can see the incredible amount of work that went into this. What I see is this was done by people who pay taxes, who understand it, who feel it, who have a great deal of sensitivity towards people in positions that struggle to pay their taxes. And so part of what I see is this committee is working hard to educate our people. You took the time to put together a comprehensive report, print it, and Sheila handed it to me, she mentioned you're putting it around town just to make sure people get the information. So people, democracies work better when people are well-informed, and this is a great example of a team of people working hard to inform our citizens.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You know? And now I want to follow that up with.
Thank you so much now.
You have a recommendation.
You have a question?
Age 35, and I will.
Age?
35. Your recommendation is to disband the committee.
Yes. All right, right, well, that will understand.
Because all issues in mission that can be addressed at this time have been addressed. And you've, a couple more things, but that's good enough. I therefore, Mr. Chairman, recommend, I move that we disband the Tax Fairness Committee in acknowledgement of their wonderful service. Is there a second?
I'll keep that aside, a second for discussion.
Okay.
Okay, this has been moved and seconded for discussion. Mr. Allison?
Yeah, I think, wasn't there a proposal by the Tax Fairness Committee to continue to, uh, continue to look at the work?
Nope, they literally asked us to dissolve.
Right, we, we know nothing more we would do near term pending the government, you know, the legislature coming back with a response, you know? And depending on the response from the legislature and the governor's proposal, quick, three quick thoughts. One, some of the exemptions are so simple, it's a form handed by the assessor's office, number one. Number two, it may be the assessor and the Finance Committee can handle it. Number three is.
I will just point out for the purposes of minutes, we're supposed to be debating during the motion, but I, but that was.
Okay, I'm trying to.
No, I totally get it, and that was, I was going to.
The third option is another Tax Fairness Committee.
I do, I totally get it, I totally get it, thank you, Roy.
I'm just feeding you the lines, Steve.
Your action is just palpable, what I'm, all right. Thank you. So it's been moved and seconded and dissolved with great gratitude and thanks to the committee, the Tax Fairness Committee, all those in favor, say if I'm saying aye, all opposed say no. Mr. Gifford?
Aye.
Mr. Allison?
Aye.
Mr. Kerrigan, aye. Thank you very much, thank you.
Sure, I think. Can you come over? And the answer probably is maybe.
Okay. Next item on the agenda, Select Board Policies and Procedures Continued from July 1st. I'm going to report me, this article is sponsored by Mr. Gifford. Mr. Gifford, the floor is yours.
Okay, I am recommending in light of the time and because we have so many other things that we defer this to one more meeting.
Oh, aren't you a nice fella? You just know your way to your chair's heart, don't you? Okay, so we will table that to the next meeting. Mr. Allison, discussion on eliminating virtual participation from Select Board meetings.
Yeah, so I was really disappointed in our last meeting. You know, this isn't the first time I've had this on the agenda. You know, there are, there are multiple residents in town who are, in my opinion, recognizing our virtual meetings. And, you know, I think the message I want to convey to my teammates when we discuss this is, and the next article that I have also, is decorum. I'm just, I think that we're losing decorum in how we talk to each other. And I'm not okay with that, and I don't think any of us should accept that. And as much as I would love to keep virtual meetings, I, I don't think the benefit is there. I think that it's being used in the wrong ways. So as much as benefit it is, you know, providing a number of residents, overall, I think it's been a detriment, especially over the last, maybe year, year and a half. You know, it's not a requirement, no. You know, it's not locked on me that I am remote, as I make this statement. But, you know, certainly, it's certainly something that is a privilege, not a right. And I'm here to move that we stop for Select Virtual Meetings. And let's, let's bring back decorum before we try to enable, you know, anybody doing anything in meetings. It's just, it's too much, it takes away from our mission, and I am opposed to it. And again, this is not, this is not the first time I've had this on the agenda, there's been multiple instances. And I just think that as a board, we have to take a stand about leading by example, and that's what I act.
Okay, so did you, do you, do you wish to make a motion, or do you want to have?
Yeah, I didn't know if y'all wanted to debate first and go forward, or I could just make a motion. So I move that as a matter of policy, the Select Board stop having remote meeting participation unless deemed necessary by the Chair of the Board.
Okay. Is there a second?
I'm willing to second for discussion purposes.
And that is appropriate. So it's been moved and seconded. Would you like to begin discussion, or would you?
I'm opposed to the motion, and I think.
Picked up on that based on how you did your second.
And I hope we don't have to spend a lot of time. I think there were eloquent comments made with regards to this issue during the comment period this evening. We benefit greatly from having hybrid meetings, and I strongly believe we need to continue that.
Okay. So I will say, I am also opposed to the motion, but I think it's important to acknowledge the framing, and I appreciate, because I think this is an important conversation we need to have on a regular basis. This is, it's not a requirement as it was during the pandemic. The benefit of it is significant, as people laid out. But it's a benefit also to the people watching at home to make sure we maintain a level of decorum that is befitting what they're asking us to do, what we've been elected to do, and what people participating do. So I will vote against it tonight, but I'm not saying that I'm against it entirely should decorum reach a point where it's just untenable and business is not able to be done. I don't believe we're there. I think there is a benefit to it. I think there is a benefit to it, but I would echo what Jason said about the need for us to stay focused on the work that we're here to do, which is exemplled well by the work of the Tax Fairness Committee. This is thoughtful, difficult, complex work, if you agree with it or disagree with it. Our hope is that when we either virtually or in reality enter this room, we come with a sense of purpose and not questioning each other's motives and going after each other for personal or professional reasons. We're here, I'm assuming you're all here as citizens, because you want to see our town succeed, and you want to see the board succeed and the different commissions succeed. And we can all do that together, but we need to be, we need to be at least honest with each other about maintaining a strong sense of decorum. So I both hear the comments that were mentioned earlier in the public comment, but I want to make sure I echo what Jason said, and there's a need for this conversation, that we have to at least check ourselves. I do this oftentimes myself, is, you know, making sure that, am I behaving the best way I possibly can? And believe me, I'm sure there's plenty of people in the room with an opinion on that one. But I just encourage folks to just, to just take to heart the reasoning behind the motion and the intent behind it, is not to quell anything, it's just to try to refocus us, I believe, on making sure we are bored and a town based on decorum and respect with each other. So, Mr. Allison, do you have any additional comments?
Yeah, just, you know, my concern, my concern is that we're rewarded for behavior, and we're not leading by example. And, you know, I'll just, I'll just ask each of you, you know, as you exit the meeting tonight and, you know, are reflecting, trying to fall asleep, like, what is it going to take? What is it going to take as an action by a resident for us to actually do something about their behavior? Right? Like, we don't have a lot of levers and dials to pull, but we have to, we cannot be complacent in bad behavior. That's my opinion, and lead by example. And sometimes those are some tough choices, and that's why we're in these positions to take these tough choices. So truly ask yourselves, what would it take for that to happen? And figure it out, because I believe we're heading toward whatever it is, and it's, I would rather curb it now and have a little bit of pain than something really bad happen in a remote meeting that is just not acceptable and we'll all be aghast. So that's where it's going, and try to get in front and appreciate the dialogue and both listening for the discussion.
Okay. So there remains a motion on the floor for eliminating virtual participation in select board meetings. All in favor, say if I'd be saying aye. All opposed, say no. Mr. Gifford?
No.
Mr. Allison?
Aye.
Mr. Kerrigan, no. Okay. Next item on the agenda, Jason, you're up for discussion, Select Board Policy Regarding Unacceptable Behavior of Select Board, oh, select, sorry, Select Board Appointed Board Committee Members.
Yeah, the message is decorum, right? Now, elected officials obviously visiting the appointed boards and committees, and there's nothing to be done. We, as a board, we've kicked around some policy for acceptable behavior, that type of thing. That was a pretty big failure. But I worry that, again, as leaders, we appoint some boards and committees. And at some, last time I spoke to council and the town administrator, like, it's really hard to remove somebody who's appointed to a committee by the select board. Like, you really need a high bar. And I would like this board to consider, you know, and I won't be making the motion tonight, this is really just for consideration, like, decorum, like, it's going to be my, it's going to be my message, probably until I'm done on the board, whenever that is, right? Like, we need to act civilly. That's all I'm asking for, civility. That's it. Like, I don't need everybody to agree with me. I don't think all of us need to agree, but we need to be civil. That should be, that should be the minimum that's reasonable. So what my proposal for everyone to think about is, you know, should we consider a policy about appointed officials and if they're not acting at a level of reasonable decorum, that they can be removed from their appointed position? So that's the consideration for something for the board to think about, and, you know, should something more come up or additional conversation, happy to talk about it. But that's where my mind is. I'm concerned that as leaders, we're allowing our appointed officials to act inappropriately. That's not what we really want for our town.
Just a clarifying question, are you hoping that if Ralph or myself wished to have a further conversation about this, about developing a policy that we added as a future agenda item, or you just want us to give it some thought?
Yeah, that's probably it. Think about it and consider if it's something that you're passionate about also. Also, this is maybe a conversation of one, hopefully it's the only one, and it never happened, and nothing ever happens again, and maybe in the future, you know, we'll never have to talk about it again. Wouldn't that be nice?
That would be lovely. Do you have anything you'd like to say on this item?
Oh, briefly. I love working with passionate people. I find that passionate people get things done, they make things happen, and occasionally their passion shows in inappropriate manners. We'll work on the inappropriate manners, but let's channel and corral that passion. That's how we make progress. So I'm willing to work on some coaching, try to set a good example, and when we get something that's a little bit out of line, we'll talk privately and try to square it away, get back to work.
So I think what Jason's trying to say is how to deal with things when we find it out of line, how do we as a board enact a policy that can deal with the things that are out of line? So it sounds like we should have a further conversation?
Sounds like a further conversation.
Okay. Let's maybe put it on the floor.
Yeah, I mean, can I say something?
Better than anybody.
One thing to consider is, I'm sure that you all, I know, I have, sorry. I'm sure that you all get hundreds and hundreds of emails, so I am not so naive to think that you read them all. But if you do read them, and they're just fundamentally cruel, or wrong, or flawed, or filled with things that are about staff or the town that are personal, and what is the board's, what is the board's perceived obligation to sort of stop that? Right? And that's rhetorical right now, because I don't know the answer to that.
No, I think it's an important question.
Well, when I receive ones about staff, I often have to decide, do we ignore this? Is ignoring it showing that I'm complacent? Is ignoring it sending the message that I agree?
Right.
Is disagreeing only going to further perpetuate the divide type of thing? So it's just something to consider. I think it happens in every city and town in the United States, so.
I think it's a worthy.
We probably won't solve the answer nationwide, but we might be able to solve it a little bit here.
All right, let's spend some time on it, for sure. Because it's, it's a worthy conversation to have more in depth. Thank you, Jason, for raising it. All right. Ralph, I'm gonna just, I'm assuming yours is going to take just a few minutes. Can we clear the decks on some other things first?
Sure.
Lancaster Community Center Kitchen, is that a quick one?
We're going to table that.
That's very quick.
We are waiting on something from a partner that Kelly will be bringing forward, but we just, we don't want to put the cart before the horse.
Okay. Ratification of the MOU at the library trustees, is that?
Yeah, so that was.
That's ready.
That was accepted by the library trustees in their last meeting. I had provided it to you earlier. I had a conversation with Steve over the phone. I had a conversation with Jason at a one-on-one meeting. Neither had any glaring issues to that. I think we had said if anybody had anything to add, they would write, so I didn't receive anything. And I know Joe Muley, our library director, and Frank Streeter are both here as a trustee.
And Emily Rose.
And Emily Rose. So if there's any questions.
I have none.
Oh, and I'm sorry, and Kendra is here as Chair of the Historical Commission.
I have none, because as we said at the last meeting, if I had any questions, I would type them up, but I did not. No, so I think it's fantastic, and I appreciate the work of the library trustees and the historical commission on this. Do you have any? Okay, Jason, so we just need to vote to ratify the MOU?
Excuse me for one moment.
I would just, well, I'm just going to excuse you for just a second. I just want to ask you what the process is. Thanks, Joe.
You would actually, because it's between you and the trustees and the commission, you would not vote, you would just vote to approve?
Just to ratify, yeah.
And then I will give you the copy, and I'll circulate this. Right, and then once everybody has signed, I will.
Okay. So now.
But next stop is the commission.
Yes. So, Joe, do you have a comment?
Thank you. Thank you. I just want to make sure that because, you know, Kate's office has been very available to me, but the board, since its last meeting, I sent the wrong version to CAP. So that was what we were calling version one, which included all the edits up to that part. It's just trustees volume one. So Kate and I worked on edits for what we call, for that draft, volume six. So everything in the trustees became version one, and then since then, I realized I sent the wrong version, and version two has all the edits from the board. That's the only thing I want to say. I don't know if you've seen it.
Appreciate it.
They have, because, Joe, that's the one that I sent to them.
Okay, terrific.
Yeah, yeah.
But I appreciate you flagging it. Okay. Any questions, comments from my fellow board members? Okay, so is there a motion to ratify that? Do we do it?
Accept.
Accept. So moved?
Second.
Any further discussion? Hearing none. Oh.
Well, Jason is not here, so does he want to have someone sign on his behalf?
We can conquer that after we pass and decide we're going to sign. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Jason?
Aye.
Steve, aye. Now, Jason, you're not here. Would you like someone else to sign your, would you like, authorize the town administrator or myself to sign your name in your absence? Or does it need to be?
I'm trying to figure somebody famous that no one's coming, so I guess it'll have to be Kate Hodges.
She's famous. She's famous in my household. You authorize Kate Hodges, sounds good. Okay. All right. Sign there, right there on Ralph Gifford.
All right.
Kate?
Yes?
Quick question. I'm sorry.
Who's that? Kendra?
Sorry, I'm careening through Pennsylvania.
Okay, well, don't careen, drive safely.
Do I need to sign?
You will need to.
Yes, you guys are, you're the last stop, so I will give it to you tomorrow when we meet.
Yes.
Perfect, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next, ratification of intergovernmental agreement with housing consortium.
So these were sent electronically from Victoria Petracca et al.
Yep.
And these are the two Lancaster signatories that are necessary. So this is a continuation of the housing consortium that we have with the 13 other communities. And Littleton is the lead community here, but also subsidized by some staff in Hudson on their planning department.
Okay. Any questions? Is there a motion?
A move that we approve?
Sounds good. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, all those in favor, say if I'd be saying aye. All opposed, say no. Mr. Gifford?
Aye.
Mr. Allison?
Aye.
Mr. Kerrigan, aye. More fun stuff to sign. Okay, next item on the agenda is review of the planning board. Let's hold on that, because I'm going to give. Oh, Jason, do you want her to sign? Can you do your blessing for signing?
We will authorize the project to sign on my behalf.
Okay, great. Fantastic. I'm going to, Hawthorne Land, I can't imagine it's going to be quick, so.
Well, it seems to be a pretty succinct report.
Yeah. Let's hold on that just for a second, so we can take that after number five. So we'll do five and then nine. Before that, let's do 10, ratification of parking violations, appeals procedures.
Right, so someone appealed a parking ticket that they received down at the beach, and as the administrative hearing officer, I went forward, it's my first one that I've had here. So I went forward to have the hearing, and we don't have any policies or procedures for the hearing, nor do we have any procedures for how somebody would want to request a hearing. So what they did was send the ticket back to us, which is in fact not the right way to do it, although how would they know? So.
They got the desired response, though.
These are the policies and procedures that would be very helpful to have. They are consistent with Massachusetts General Law.
Yes.
If you accept them, we will send a certified letter to the individual who received the ticket, with the ticket, giving them an additional 21 days to appeal the ticket.
Yes. I just, it brought me back to, I think, 98 or 99, when we had one ticket, because the person was parked on Main Street during a snow emergency, it was $10, and it made the Scopes Monkey Trial look like a joke. It was a very serious hearing that went on for way too long for $10, but it took me back always. So I am all for ratifying these new parking violation appeal procedures.
Interesting what, you know, you don't find out things until you realize that we don't have.
This is what's important about the way in which we're tackling governance here in town. When we find that, an area of improvement, we make it. I trust my colleagues are prepared to ratify the recommendations?
I have somehow missed those in the packet. Where were they in the packet? I apologize for that.
I don't know, because I didn't send the packet, but I did send them out before I left.
I mean, it certainly sounds something like something I would support. I just haven't seen it.
Yeah, nope, that's fine.
And it's possible I just simply overlooked it.
I'm not having the best time with my Wi-Fi here.
Why don't we, while we're searching for that, we can?
Well, I see page, I see page six of seven, so if I bring up the digital packet that was sent by CAP for parking, it will be, I believe.
Six of seven. All right. Oh, wait, six of seven? I'm on, my packet is 142 pages.
What, six of seven of the, of the?
So if you have a digital packet, just search for parking. It's two of six.
All right. Search for parking.
Let's see if I can see decisions and proceedings. Oh, maybe that's not it. I think that was it.
Well, that's on the agenda.
I think that.
Ah, okay. I, obviously, I was going a little too fast.
This is the out of the parker for PJ D. Why don't we?
Oh, no, you're right. This is not it. Yep.
Why don't we?
Yeah.
Okay. Why don't we push this aside for a minute, and then we will make sure everyone has a chance to review it. Next items, and then we're going to come to yours. I just want to clear the decks, continue to clear the decks and things. Two things, appointments, community preservation. Margot Streeter, who was appointed at the last meeting, as indicated, she is not willing to serve for the term, so we are, we will be posting that, so folks who have applied already, or new folks, can submit. If you've already applied, just let us know, and if you've already spoken, that's fine. We can consider that at the next meeting. Memorial School Reuse Committee, three open positions, terms to expire, 6/30/27. The three applications, two are reappointments, the two for reappointment are Cynthia LaFave and Van Cromwick for residents at large, and then Mary Zadroga for residents at large but not reappointment.
I move to appoint Cynthia Vavet, resident at large, Mary Zadroga, resident at large, Van Cromwick, resident at large, with terms to expire, 6/30/2027.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, say if I'd be saying aye. Opposed, say no. Mr. Gifford?
Aye.
Mr. Allison?
Aye.
Mr. Carrigan, aye. Congratulations. Well done. Very tumultuous appointment process there. Okay, licenses and permits, application for public entertainment weekdays and Sundays.
I move to approve the application for public entertainment weekdays and Sundays. Dean and Flynn, Inc., EVA Fiesta Shows, the Annual World Fair, August 9th to 11th, 2024. Friday noon to 10:00 PM, Saturday 9:00 AM to 10:00 PM, and Sunday 10:00 AM to 9:00 PM at the Lancaster Fairgrounds, 318 Severn Bridge Road.
Is there a second? Okay. All those in favor, second in favor saying aye. Opposed, say no. Mr. Gifford?
Aye.
Mr. Allison?
Aye.
Mr. Carrigan, aye. Do you wanna do the next permit, Jason?
I move to approve special permit removal of products renewal. Applicant James Simpson, name of business LLC Inc., address of business Jungle Road, Lancaster, MA, Act 23, parcel 7. Permit last issued August 20th, 2022 through August 20th, 2024. Two-year permit. Reason for request, earth removal, site preparation, renewal of existing tenant.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second for discussion purposes.
Got it. Okay. We are in discussion. If you're the one who wants to discuss.
Yep. Okay. We need to have a hearing anytime we have an earth products permit application. Once these products are removed, they're not coming back. We need to make sure it's done well, done properly. We need to make sure that any abutters that might be affected are heard from, that all the environmental considerations are properly considered, and the best way to do that is through a hearing. And therefore, I believe we need to have a hearing every time we do one of these.
So it's been typically, how are you? I believe you're the applicant, would be my guess. Yes, okay.
You voted at the last meeting to waive the hearing.
I was just gonna say, we voted at the last meeting to waive the hearing.
Thank you for reminding me of that.
On renewals, we try not to do hearings. We can certainly discuss that, but the previous meeting, we voted to waive the hearing.
Well, if we voted that, then I, my hands are tied.
But your point is, but your point is made, and we can certainly discuss that moving forward.
I really want to see hearings.
So I should, sorry, before you start, I should just tell you, Ty and Bob says that they have no comments, that everything is exactly according to the permit. The sign is clean, it's well-kept. The owners and people who work there are exemplary, and they said that yours is one of the easiest that they've had to.
All right.
Thank you for that.
Anything I can answer for you, I'd be happy to.
I will see, we are in the middle of a motion, but let's see if anybody, does anyone have any questions? I don't. Jason, do you?
Yeah, I just, I just wanna make a point that, yeah, I get what Ralph's saying about public hearing, but I also wanna say that, you know, nothing's stopping residents from sending us, something that's in common concerns, you know, stuff, you know, kind of have a public hearing.
Okay. Any comment from you? Thank you for coming in, and thank you for doing business in town. All those in favor, second in favor saying aye. Opposed, say no. Mr. Gifford?
Aye.
Mr. Allison?
Aye.
Mr. Carrigan, aye. Congratulations.
Thanks for your time.
Thank you very much. All right. Now, we are back up.
I didn't know who that was.
I didn't either. I was wondering who he was.
He's here for many hours.
Stick to it, Ness.
My goodness.
Dedicated to the task. All right, since the Hawthorne Lane recommendations, the referral from Chairman Streeter, and I was personally appealed to by the chairman to see if we could take this up next, and then we'll go to, to your item. So, Mr. Chairman, would you like to run through your referral on the Hawthorne Way matter, please?
I would be pleased to.
Thank you.
So, very quickly, the road itself has not appeared to have changed since when it was originally laid out. As you can see from our letter, we consulted with both Public Safety Commissioner Everett Moody and Public Works Superintendent Scott McDonald, as well as Town Council. Public safety has no specific concerns. They believe they can navigate the road with their current equipment. There are some concerns about whether the water hydrants that were supposed to be raised above grade have actually been raised above grade yet. That is not clear from the materials that we were sent, so we flagged that. DPW has some significant concerns in general about the pumping station and other issues, but those do not concern the road, so they have signed off on the road. We consulted in some depth with a manual by previous town council, couple of minutes page, about accepting roads, half of which was all about getting clear title and all the things that could unfortunately grab Kate by the ankle when she thought she was across the line. So I commend that, but basically, it says, resolve the title issues. And the planning board's final concern was that if the order of conditions said that the road was going to be private initially, often the developer was given concessions for that. So if the planning board, and I can't speak for previous ones, and I won't, has specified in the order of conditions that something should be private, the board feels that it should stay private going forward. Based on our discussion, the board may look at these things differently, but as of today, that's how it stands. So in sum, as it's laid out on the ground, it appears to be okay. Title will be the select board's responsibility. And we are not, unlike the zoning, required to give a plus or minus, positive or negative report. So that's the extent of it. Thanks for sending it to our desk. It's back on yours.
Thank you, Frank. The hot potato that is Hawthorne. No.
Maybe you could change that.
Yeah, this is, it's really important that we get to the bottom of all of this and get everyone's opinions. Desire for the board moving forward?
So this is one piece of a larger puzzle. We've been cautioned by our current council to keep the matters as separate as we can. The roadway is as it is. It went through an inspection with the former DPW superintendent. A boring hole was made. It was, the road was to spec. The hydrants that were supposed to be fixed along the roadway have been. The trees that were needed to be planted along the roadway have been. Our issue with title comes with the open space and the pump house. I have been in contact with, with the builder. He is amenable to doing a friendly taking. The owners of Lot 9 are amenable to doing a access agreement and easement over their property for the other pieces of it. So things are moving along. The reason this is necessary is if the select board wishes to accept the laying out of the road, the board will need to discuss that, and it will need to go back to town meeting. Now, I understand that a citizen's petition came forward on the matter, but that is not how a laying out of a public way takes place. So the board took that as a request. You can, the request through MGL doesn't need to be dictated, it doesn't need to meet one form or another. So that was what you all considered to be the request, but ultimately, the board has to decide to put it on a warrant, and then town meeting would have to vote to accept it. The laying out of the way, an article sponsored, can be sponsored by the planning board. In this case, it would likely be best be sponsored by the select board.
Good. Board members, discussion?
Did you see Frank has his hand up?
Oh, I did not. Frank, sorry. I don't have the zoom on.
Just a quick question, quick point of order. The board felt that when title issues and the like are resolved, which was our biggest concern, that if you wanna come back and get an updated report from the board, that we are certainly amenable to so doing. But, you know, there's a process here, even though this is way outside of normal parameters, and the board wishes to be cooperative.
Thank you very much. We appreciate the board's cooperation. Okay. Now, my board. Comments, questions, concerns? Yes?
Question to our town administrator. In terms of really getting this whole project, I'll say, tied up with a bow in the best possible fashion for Lancaster, are we better off to try to do this in totality or in pieces? In other words, if we do the road acceptance, we're doing that as a piece. I realize that there are separate processes for all of these, but I would like to see an agreement for the totality of the project. So what would work best from your perspective?
Well, given the circumstances that we're in, including all of those that predate all of us, I believe tackling the road as its own piece outside of the open space and the pump station is in the best interest of the residents who live at Hawthorne Lane, who, I guess, arguably, through no fault of their own, are in this particular situation. And so my feeling has always been that somewhere along the line, something went amiss, and it's incumbent upon the town's leaders to rectify that. And unfortunately, it isn't consistent with what was planned, and so that's something that the town leaders need to consider. The alternative is that you have people with a roadway that is not being maintained properly, could be a safety issue, is and was a safety issue in this past winter, and, and there's families that are there that pay taxes and are members of the community like everyone else. So the situation is much less than ideal, but I would say taking the, the road is one step, and the others might be a bit more complicated because there's tax title issues, and obviously, the pump station is its own beast.
So I would, I appreciate, that's a great answer. The, the thing that I want to add.
Well done.
Is that there are also impacts on the abutters, and they are affected by the other.
Correct.
Other issues there. And so my concern is that if we move ahead with the road, we make the residents of Hawthorne Lane happy for all the reasons you eloquently described, but we reduce our negotiating leverage for solving the other problems which impact people who were there before this was ever built. That is why I, my, my instinct is that we shouldn't move forward with the road until we have agreement on resolving the other issues.
Okay. So that's a policy decision?
Yeah.
So I, what I gave you was honestly my, my opinion, just having, you know, lived it for the past couple of years. I will say, independent of whatever happens with the titles and the pump house, one of the things that cannot wait are the easements that we have for the utilities. And so to the extent that the board is saying, let's do this holistically, I understand that that would be ideal. I agree that that would be ideal. There will be a piece of this that will not be holistic, because we need to move ahead on that. And so I would hope that the board would think to themselves, we're taking up one piece of this, not in line with all of the others. Is it proper or improper to take up two not in line with the others? And again, that's a policy decision, and you're absolutely right. There is an impact about the other things to, to the neighbors. I, I don't believe, unless somebody comes out to speak to me about it that I haven't already heard, that there would be an impact to abutters relative to the roadway. I think the good that comes of that is that you have 14 households up there with all of the people that are in it that are able to traverse the roadway to their driveways, and their children are able to get the bus at the bottom of the hill. But again, that's, that's my perspective, and that is not policy.
Mr. Chair, is there a specific action that is sought this evening?
Well, I'm gonna ask Jason if he has any comments, and then I just think we have to give direction from a policy perspective on how we want Kate to move forward. Go ahead, Jason.
Yeah, nothing new. I think we've got a good plan. We keep it on the plan.
Yeah, I mean, my preference would be, and I hear what you're saying, Ralph, for sure, my preference would be, I'd love to just make as much progress on all of it as soon as possible. I know Kate would as well, but if we can get this road piece resolved, to do it. Do you feel you need a policy vote to back you up, Kate?
No, not, not a vote, I think. I mean, this will come back. It's like the bad penny, it keeps turning up, but it will come back closer to when we are gonna have a town meeting special or regular. And my hope is that I have some of the other matters.
Yeah, I mean.
Holds to are already buttoned up, so it can only get better. Only having this is the worst-case scenario, so. To the extent that makes anybody feel just a little bit better.
Does it make you feel a little bit better?
Not a bad situation.
Look, yeah, I keep trying to forward. If we can get it all done, great. If we have to get the road done on the time that we have to get it done, let's get it done.
I mean, the, the builder responded to my last couple of emails. It was a very pleasant back and forth. I think that there's a willingness and a desire to try to just move on, which is important. And I think, like a lot of, I don't know, compromise, pretty much everybody will be unhappy about something.
Yeah. All right, well, let's try to minimize the unhappiness, but yes.
I will say, one of the things that I will be bringing forward also, and it isn't necessarily about Hawthorne, but the impetus behind wanting something like this was because of that, was the denial of permits for anybody who has outstanding taxes or hasn't been able to comply with their special permits that were already given. And I know that some folks thought that Lancaster had that capability, but we don't. It's an actual adoption of a, of a bylaw underlying in MGL, so.
Awesome.
To the extent that that provides us some coverage in the future.
Fantastic. All right, go forth and continue to progress. All right, now, we have one, if I kept track well enough, I think, we have one remaining item in administration, budget, and policy. Nothing left in permits, and then we have to go to executive session. Ralph, I'm gonna ask, should I try to take a bio break now?
Yes.
Or should I, okay, this is, now, keep in mind, I hope you don't want action on this, since you didn't share any of your materials with us. None of us can, we don't know what we're getting, so this is likely you've given us, and then we're gonna have to take time to learn. So.
Wait, what?
Oh, yeah, all right.
I wanna make sure, sorry, this is a procedure question.
Yeah.
I know that, I know that if we have a meeting all together in the same room, two people, the members can't leave. I just wanna make sure that I'm virtual, and you are able to leave.
Yeah, don't leave the room you're in.
You are okay, but thank you for checking.
We're gonna be at recess for, let's say, three minutes. We are resumed. Are we unmuted?
Yes.
Okay, fantastic. You all heard about Ralph's play ride. That's good. That was what we call a state legislature three-minute break. Okay, Ralph, you are, oh, sorry, yeah, Ralph, you are up.
Yep, thank you. And I, Kate, I emailed you. I converted to a Word document. I don't want this.
Would you like me to share?
Yes, please.
So just for the, those playing at home, select board, the, the title of this is Select Board's Goals. A is Proposal for Procedural Changes in FY '25, and B is FY '25 Goals and Objectives. C is FY '24 Goals and Objectives Review, and you have given us this piece of paper.
Yep, this is, I have multiple pieces of paper. This is the first one.
Does Jason have this?
Kate is going to be displaying it on the screen here in a moment, and.
I was just, it makes me.
I should have emailed a copy to Jason.
I can do that. I can do that.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, hold on one second. I just in 15 different, okay. Okay. Okay, does that look proper?
Looks great, thank you.
Jason, I am sending it right now.
See, this is to start the ball rolling on the Select Board setting goals that we wish to achieve. Some of these will be short-term, some will be long-term. I by no means profess to come with all possible goals that we'll ever set. As I say, it's to start this discussion rolling. So this first one that I've just handed out is a property tax goal. And the graph that is, I'm waiting for it to become visible on the screen here so that others can follow along.
Sorry, I think it's because I sent an email, it got off of this.
There we go. Okay, what this graph presents is the percentage of property value, the average percentage of property value for single-family tax bills. And it compares Lancaster with Bolton, Harvard, Lunenburg, Boylston, Shirley, Sterling, Clinton, and Air, towns in our area. As you can see, Lancaster has the highest at 1.81%. Air has the lowest at 1.27%. And I am proposing that we set ourselves a long-term goal of reaching 1.5% and to do that in stages, going of 1.7 for fiscal year '26, 1.6 for fiscal year '27, and 1.5 for fiscal year '28. 1.5 is pretty much right in the middle of what the towns around us are doing.
Can I ask a question?
Of course.
So do you know what the reduction means for the town from a budgetary perspective, each one of these 0.1% reductions? From a bottom line to the budget?
I have not... So there's a variety of ways we can approach this from a bottom-line perspective?
If you don't, that's fine.
I don't.
That's fine. So I also, when I'm looking at this, like, the first three towns make a ton of sense. Then you get to Lunenburg, which has a lot of business. Boylston has a lot of business. Shirley has a lot of business.
West Boylston has a lot of business.
I drive through Boylston every day on the way to Worcester. There's a lot of business in Boylston, not just on Route 70, but there's a lot of business. But anyway, Shirley, Sterling, Clinton, and Air. It's not, I just don't... I get you're comparing us to places in proximity, but we're not comparing, it's like apples to commquads when it comes to our ability to raise tax revenue other than through residential property tax.
Did you look at the percentage of those? What's the percentage of their commercial and industrial tax base?
I did not look at that.
It's hard to say that there's gonna be a reduction if you don't have a correspondent, because the reduction comes from residential. So I guess the question, and this is the same one that was posed when we were talking about the override, what's getting cut?
So I didn't say anything in this about cutting anything. What I'm saying is...
1.8 to 1.5.
Yeah, so this is to bring focus towards, how would we achieve that such as, what are the steps when you to do to increase?
But can I ask you, where'd you come up with the numbers? Just because it matches the middle?
So what I did, I started off by looking at the MAS DLS as stated on the document. And I looked at a whole bunch of different numbers and approaches.
Sorry, I should rephrase my question. I understand where you get these numbers. Where did you get your goals?
Yeah, I got the goal by saying, it seems like being in the middle is about the right. I'm not aiming to be the lowest and I don't like being the highest.
Right, I don't like us being the highest. I was very clear, I don't like us being the highest either, which is why every time I talk about this town, I talk about diversifying our tax base and increasing opportunities that don't include property tax, residential property tax. I'm worried about, so if this were phrased as, "Increase our other-than-residential property tax allocation," or whatever, "by adding more non-residential taxable industry or commercial land by X percent a year," all for it. That will, I think, then have a net effect of lowering our percentage of property tax, per residential property tax. I just think it's, if you can't answer the other questions of how we're gonna do it and what we're gonna cut, we can't agree to any of these goals because if we do, we're just, we're cutting off our nose to spite our face.
So there I see things a little differently. What I see often is goals help you focus on, let me put it this way. Nobody knew how they were gonna get to the moon when John Kennedy said, "I'm setting a goal for us to land a man on the moon by 1970." There were a lot of questions and...
And they had the federal budget, which can run a deficit. We can't. I mean, that's a real statement. That's, I mean, I love that, that's great, and I love the moon shot, but that's not the deal.
But the thing is, they set a goal and then they said, "Okay, now how are we gonna do that?" And this is what I'm trying to suggest, is we say, "Okay, we want to..." "We don't want to be the highest and what do we need to do to solve that problem?" We're not, the answers are complex and it's gonna take us months to figure on. But if we don't start by setting a goal, what's gonna drive us to work on?
So first of all, I think we have the goal of reducing, I've had it for years, the goal of reducing the burden on residential property tax owners. And so I don't disagree with the idea of lowering that. I think it's what we absolutely have to do. I just, the idea of us saying, "We are gonna reduce this particular revenue stream," which is what you're talking about, "by 0.1% of the whatever the goal is," without A, knowing what that dollar one is, and B, where the cuts are gonna come from. Because by the way, if we don't increase the pie in another category, we have to cut to meet our goal. No?
It will take, yes.
Sorry, Jason, I just saw your hand, because the screen's up, sorry. I just saw your hand on the...
Oh, yeah, let me...
Sorry.
I gotcha, I gotcha.
I can see it on the screen. Go ahead, Jason, sorry.
Yeah, so Ralph, love the goal. Love the goal. I'm sure we've all heard of SMART goals. So what I love about your goal, it's just about there. You're specific, you're measurable, relevant, and time-bound, right? Very good goal, but what you're missing is the A in SMART, which is achievable. And I think that's what we're all saying is, "I just don't know if it's achievable." I personally do not know without more information if that goal is achievable by adding revenue or cutting. I have no idea. I think for that specific goal, I think you need a little bit more information, almost a proposal about, you know, some real numbers. Because I'm not signing to that line unless I know how achievable it is. So that's the only input I have. Thank you.
I believe it's achievable, but I, and I believe that if we set this goal, it's gonna help us stay focused on actually achieving it.
Can you tell me how it's achievable?
Yeah, so I have two questions. A, that one. And B, are you then suggesting that we're not focused on reducing people's tax burdens? That if we pick an unattainable goal, which I think this is, but if you can explain to me how it's attainable. What I don't want the taxpayers and the residents to hear is, if we don't accept a goal that's unattainable, we're not taking their property bill seriously. And I don't think you meant to suggest that, so I'm gonna give you a chance to correct that.
Yeah, so I think first of all...
But also answer the, how do you think it's achievable?
Yeah, as evident as it's achievable, I would just point to the fact that Shirley, Boylston, I mean, you know, they're already below this goal.
Because they have more commercial, industrial...
So we need more.
Right, but we're not gonna do it in one fiscal year.
I was not proposing that because it's in one fiscal year. I said...
For FY '26, we're gonna go down 0.1 between FY '26 and '27. So all right, 18 months.
We got...
And you've had, if a project is...
Three fiscal years. Fiscal year '26, '27, '28.
We start in '26. We go from 1.8 to 1.7 in '26, which is next July 1st. And you've set your goal based on a chart, but not with the data that backs up why Air has 1.27%. I'm all, I love a goal, I think it's fantastic. I like an attainable goal even more. But I'm all for the lab threw his cap over the wall and had no choice but to follow. But we have a town to run and if these goals are based on, like, if you can't say to me, "Why is Boylston at 1.47?" I drive by a lot of businesses in Boylston, so I'd love to know what they're... I know, I mean, we all know Clinton is at 1.38%. Or 1.38, it's a half a percent less than we are, but there's a ton more businesses there. So anyway, I guess my point would be, I don't think just because we're in the middle that we wanna get to the middle without data that explains what these blue lines mean. Yeah, so...
Okay, let me go on to the next one because I have four for tonight and that will be all for tonight. Love to keep...
But I'm all for the push to increase our diversity. Do you need this? You have these emailed too, right, Kate?
Yep, and so now the next page on that document.
Oh, it's the same document.
It's the include five-year budget projections in our official voted budget, starting with the FY '26 budget.
Yep.
Take me through this.
Okay, so certainly, we've brought up the topic of five-year budget projections a number of times and it's been stated a number of times that we already do this.
Yes.
And that is true, but it's not been available publicly until very recently, a document with the five-year projections was shared. I think it was last month for the first time that it was shared publicly. I would like, what I'm proposing is that we set a goal of actually including our five-year budget projections in our official budget document.
But the numbers are flawed because the DLS doesn't put out the appropriate numbers, which is why there was some email that was circulating that, you know, said, "Oh, they just made this up," or something. You were copied on it and it's not true. And so the problem is, you go to the DLS, even your data right now, I just, I'm asking Cheryl to sign back on because it's the same conversation over again and I just feel like I don't articulate this properly. But you're taking money and projections that are from flawed categories from the DLS. Like, for example, people think it was literally a coincidence that the free cash lined up, but it isn't really money not spent in the budget and people seem to equate the two. And no matter how much we try to explain that, it's met with a lot of nastiness.
What does this solve? So...
I mean, we can put it out there, but the problem is, is that the day that we print it, the next day it's different and the next day it's different. And when the audit's done, it's different. And when we go for the next year's capital plan, it's different. And the money that we get from grants is different.
I see, yeah, Jason. So what does this solve for and then we'll go to Jason's question.
So five-year projections will help people understand the impact of the financial decisions that we make today. When we make the, when we make our decisions without being able to see the long-term impact, we get ourselves into a sort of a up-down...
Whose way? You see the projections. The finance committee sees the projections. That's who's making...
And we have budget meetings starting July of the previous year that go all year round and public budget forums. I just, I feel like there is a, there's a perception that people perpetuate that there's some sort of a hide-the-ball game going on here when the furthest, that's furthest from the truth. Like, they are incredibly transparent about the budget process. We're incredibly transparent about the budget process. So again, I'm just trying, I guess, I'll ask and answer the question. Are you trying to solve for this perception that there's information not being shared with the public?
No, it's not, it's not about perception. It's about helping people understand the long-term impact of our budget decisions.
Which is okay, but what you just said was, "It's for the people making the decisions." And so what I'm saying to you, just so that you know, is the people that are making the decisions, which is this board, the finance committee, the department heads who are bringing things forward, you have access to that. I mean, if you wanna send it, it's public information.
Jason, go on.
Yeah, so I'll try to put it all out in one breath. So I don't like this goal. This is not really a goal, in my opinion. This is a tactic. And to Steve's point, it's like a tactic for an unknown problem. Even with what I know today, I've not received one request in my history of a Select Board member for this information. I have not had a FinCom, direct, anybody in the town staff, any committee, anyone ask me for this. So what is it needed for? What problem is it solving, to Steve's point, right? Like, it's not in our town report and our financial planning because of what Kate just said. I wanna make sure her, what she said. She said, "The second the state is printing, it's flawed." That's why it's not in there, right? So you have the answers to your questions. We know no one's asking for this information. We also know that if somebody does want access to this information, they can do a public records request and get it. So I personally don't see at all the problem we're solving and I'm open to being wrong, but I just, I just don't see it.
Cheryl did just sign on. Cheryl, do you have, yeah, so we're talking about the five... I'm sorry, is it a five-year or a 10-year?
I guess it's a five-year.
Five-year, so having the five-year forecast sort of as, either in the budget or as an appendix to the budget, which we kinda kicked around this last year. And so what I said was, you know, the, number one, the data is flawed and number two, I'm concerned that once we put it out there, that by the time people are reading that and circulating that, the data is incorrect because we will have...
It's outdated, yeah.
Yeah, okay. So can you just give like a basic overview of the, I guess, the DLS's manner in which they do our projections and what we have to send in?
The projections are just... Just give me a sec. All of the projections are, I'm taking your real estate tax out, which we do on the budget summary every year anyways. We take it out the five years. That's simple enough. It's 2.5% plus an estimate of new growth. As far as, and that's where your tax base is. When you get to local receipts, you can't, by the state's direction, increase local receipts more than what you collected the prior year. So it's a futile workbook to put together because the state doesn't allow you to put in the kind of projections you would need in order to make a true estimate or forecast.
So what we put together that you saw with all of the different sheets there, it's effectively our workbook that we go into that updates as the DLS updates. So to take that snapshot, say I took it tomorrow. So the 16th of July, if we decided to put that into the budget book, by the time you get to next month, those numbers will not be valid. It's like a ticker tape that we have here internally. So I understand what you're trying to do and I understand that there's been a lot of like discussion about this. Short of having, which we can't do by the way, but short of having, you know, somebody come in and log in with our credentials and bring it up, the information that you're gonna get is only as good as the time that you're reading it. So when we go over the budget, you'll get it, you'll see it. The, we hope, which has been the case in the last couple of years... The, we hope, which has been the case in the last couple of years, that our numbers for new growth and our numbers for local receipts are greater than they were the year prior. There was many at COVID, for example, where they were not. I suspect this year we will end up relatively the same, am I, will be relatively the same as last year, I mean, it wasn't a huge year.
Sure we need quite an increase, but it's nothing huge, no.
There are, what we need is exactly what we've been talking about, which is this great bump in economic development that's bringing in more local receipts, more permit. Right now, the permit money predominantly comes from homeowners who are, you know, pulling permits to do small, so to use Roy's example of the insignificant ten, you know, of course, somebody coming in and paying fifty dollars to do a home rental or something, sure, it adds up over time, it doesn't add up to the amount that would be substantial enough that we could say, phew, we can drop it a one percent. So I'm, I want to work to try to get you what you need, but I don't want to supply it just to supply it with the wrong information.
So I'm confused on a couple of things. First, the notion that the data is flawed or the state program is flawed and I'm trying to understand which is flawed and also if it's flawed, why do you bother entering it?
Well, we corrected in our own workbooks, but again, this is, this is our best guesstimates of.
I mean, their projections, three hundred data for all the communities.
And some of them, we can't, we can't do more than what we had the previous year.
The insignificant ten.
The insignificant ten, right.
Why do you do it?
We do it to mess, to mess around internally to figure out like, hey, if we were to be able to bring it, so say we brought in five hundred thousand last year in local receipts and we say to each other, if we can bring in a million, I wonder what that would do.
How's that gonna happen?
So this is an internal thing that we do, but I can't put a document out that says that there's a million dollars in local receipts because we're not allowed to do that.
They're workbooks for that purpose, they're working on.
I mean, in the business world, don't you ever mess with your profit margins? Right? So just to see how much money you could make, I would think, right? So you say, hey, if I sell, if I sell a million units, you know, I could make five hundred thousand dollars cash money, but you're not going to put something out to the shareholders and saying that you're going to sell a million units because that's a kind of a lofty goal?
So what I'm, what I'm trying to get at is, the reason why I do projections, long-term projections, is to try to understand where my leverage comes from. What, what decisions can I make today that will result in more income or that will reduce expenditures? Obviously expenditures can be investments that can help increase income, so I'm trying to look at this, so I'm assuming that.
The thing that you have in here has the tax rate going up by two and a half percent, so anything under than a prop two and a half override. We just passed a budget that didn't do that. Right? So I'm not going to project two and a half percent, we just passed one that was less than that, thank goodness.
Right.
So they're only as good as that snapshot in time, right? So I can, we can do something that says, hey, if you were to do two and a half percent every year, this is what your, your tax bill will end up being. We can do that and we can probably come to an average of, ah, if you have all of the personnel that we have here, say they get an on average one point seven five to two point two five percent cost of living increase, figure every five years, you're going to have probably an eight to nine percent in, you know, what we're calling risk management, so that's health insurance, building insurance, you know, we can do that. I just want you to understand, I want everybody to understand that that would be the worst-case scenario. I hope those numbers are wrong. Right? Because I mean, we don't want to raise taxes by two point five. So I can, we can do it. I guess I just, I'm not sure how much panic ensues from somebody saying, hey, ten years from now, my bill is going to go up.
That will be etched in stone for ten years. Even though their bill still is lower, they will have it etched in stone, but that's the way their bill is.
I just, the, so if you, if there's an idea on how to explain that away, to say this is the worst-case scenario, because figure, if you're going to take a ten-year projection and it's two point five every year, that's a pretty big increase in your taxes over a ten-year period that we hope not to do. Right? So I, I don't know, are we saying like this is the worst-case scenario and we, we, we want to come under this?
All right, can I just suggest something since I, I understand we have three more of these looming?
Two, just two more.
Two more.
And the next two should be, I hope easier, but maybe wrong.
Well, no, I mean, I, I'm not, look, whatever you guys decide that you want us to put in the book, we'll put in the book, I just, I don't know how helpful that will be other than for that small window of time.
So right now, does it?
Sorry, Cheryl.
What, Cheryl?
You also have to consider that while you're preparing a budget, you're closing an old budget, opening a new budget, filing state reports, so any forecast is going to be old. I can't be doing a forecast while I'm trying to fill out reports for the current year that I don't even have the final numbers for until the state's given their approval, so.
And another way in which running a town is different than running a business, because you're not waiting for the state's approval of your, your free cash, all that stuff.
I'm happy to do it, I just need to know what it is that is going to be.
What's the value?
Helpful, because what I gave you is a workbook.
What, Kelly's asked an important question, the value. The value is understanding where we're going. When we make a decision at town meeting, people vote something, those decisions have multi-year consequences, but we don't really provide information to people to help them understand the multi-year consequences. What I'm trying to get us towards is helping people to understand the long-term impact of the decisions when they, when they vote a budget at town meeting. I want people to understand that, that impact. And further to your point, I do understand that assumptions have a big impact on the numbers and so the having the assumptions, you spend a lot of time in the budget document talking about all that goes into the budgeting process and explaining the different departments and so forth. So like, for example, on a document that we provided recently, it has in fiscal year, it projects in fiscal year two thousand, twenty thirty, a one point seven million dollar deficit. That's a big deficit.
Yep.
All right? So, but, so we have a document that's out there without any of the modeling assumptions explained and I know and you know that different modeling assumptions are going to get us to different places. So the, those assumptions tell us a lot about the roadmap that's going to be helpful for us and that's the kind of information that I want to have more discussion of, that's the kind of information that will ultimately have a huge impact where we're going.
I'm more confused than I was at the beginning. So what in particular, so you said people vote at town meeting, they want to know the long, say it again, the long-range impact of the vote they have, can you explain in specific what might confuse people?
I'm saying that without information that helps them understand, they, they don't necessarily know, they're, what they get to vote on is, okay, this budget has a really relatively short-term projection of what we expect to raise in taxes for the coming year and what we expect for expenditures for the coming year. But when we, let's say for example, that we decide we're not going to invest in, in infrastructure, that, they, one of the impacts of that is that it makes it more difficult to bring in business and if we don't bring in business, then we, we don't diversify our tax base. So sometimes a short-term, I say a short-term, sometimes an expense which people might otherwise say, I don't want to increase the expenses, could in fact be the key to unlocking income that will long-term.
So is there, can you, because I, I honestly think, hey, the budget process that goes on for the entire year and then the budget presentation, both at the town meeting, primer and the town meeting, is very detailed on reasons why we're making decisions that we're making, those that are required and then those that we are opting to make. So is there one recent example that you think was not properly? I'm just trying to get my hands around, was there something recently that happened that you think was not explained to people? I, it's just, I've never heard, not one citizen, except for, I'm, I'm just going to say this because these are starting to mirror everything you talked about during your campaign, which is great, it's all important, you run on, you can't pass Mario Cuomo's edge campaign poetry, but you govern in prose and this is the real prose of it all. The only time I heard it is from some supporters of yours, but no other citizens ever in my decades in this town has ever said to me, God, you know, I'd love to see a five to ten-year projection, love to see it, because I think they feel like they're getting the information, if they're not, I would welcome them all to give us a call. So is there one concrete thing you think we've voted on the last couple of years that didn't have an explanation to?
I don't have an answer for that at the moment. I probably could think of something, I don't have an answer at the second. Listen, I, it is getting late and I don't want to drag this on, I, I think I have your perspectives on this.
What's your, what are your next ones?
Okay, next one, next slide, utilities goal.
Can you give me the thumbnail on what this is?
The sentence underlined at the top.
Develop a comprehensive utilities strategy?
Yep. So essentially, to attract business, we need infrastructure. We, we need water, power, you know, that type of thing. Right now, especially in North Lancaster where we would like to attract business, to get water from Leamester, we have Leamester doing essentially contracts with property owners that's saying, you know, you can't have hotels, you can't have, you know, that type of thing. So if we really want to take control of our destiny, we need a, I think, a comprehensive plan for infrastructure. And also as part of that plan, I think we have, over the years, I think we have other costs that we can, that affect the average citizen, as an example.
Can we go back just before we go to the average citizen cost? You said a sentence, we need a comprehensive plan on infrastructure?
Well, I talked about, I'm talking about utilities, but yes, I did use.
Or you said infrastructure.
Infrastructure and utilities are closely related.
I count utilities as infrastructure, yeah. So there's a great Aaron Sorkin line where a politician challenged somebody else and said, okay, what's the next ten words? What's after that? It's a great line, we need a comprehensive plan on infrastructure, but we can't get, literally can't get blood from a stone, so what's the next ten words and how we do that? Because I, I don't, the, the Leamester example alone, like we literally need the water from Leamester and the town of Lancaster can't dig ourselves out of the problem, nor are we going to just, I asked this question a long time ago and that's why I know the answer. We can't just provide a bunch of infrastructure to empty fields or pull them up to the sidewalks because developers want them the way they want them. And so we can't just pull them down Lunenburg Road and say, they're all here, ready to go. It's also a huge cost to us that they frankly put in their business plans to bear, so I understand the theory behind it, but what's your next ten words on, we need a comprehensive plan on infrastructure?
We're not going to attract, there's a lot of industries we will not attract without having.
Totally agree, I mean on the how.
Yep.
How do we get them?
So that's where we have to, by setting a goal, we then say, well, what do we need to do to accomplish that goal? So we need to start by putting together a committee to help us to study, to look at it, to decide what the various components of it are going to be. Tonight is not about figuring out exactly how it's all going to be done, it's, tonight is about saying, starting the discussion of, is this something that we want to achieve? Recognizing it, it'll take years.
Uh, Jason, yeah, I, Jason, sorry, your hand's up, I can't see you on the touchscreen, my apology.
No worries. So Ralph, thank you for putting this, oh, uh, let me get it back up on my screen. So Ralph, thank you for putting this goal together. I get it, I get the problems in there to solve, people's problems we want, we want things like trash pickup, you know, we don't want hitting, hitting taxes and fees and utilities and all those costs are high, I get that. But there's two things I don't like about this specific goal. First is it's more of a bottom-up goal, right? It's focusing just on utilities. And I'll, I'll say that I think it's a top-down goal based on right what you said in the middle. And I'm going to rephrase what you said, which is, we need a comprehensive strategy to attract quality businesses and reduce total cost of living in Lancaster. That's not a utilities goal, that is a Lancaster goal. So I, I wouldn't focus on utilities, I would focus on that broad, I think that's our goal and I think we already have that goal, which leads me into the second part of why I disagree with this goal is, the proposals in this go against the last version of the Lancaster Master Plan and the last version of the Lancaster Economic Development Plan. It does not say to do these things, it says to do what we've actually done, which is negotiate with Leamester and solve utilities that way. And I'll add that that's been successful because we have attracted developers, we already have a plan for North Lancaster, it's already been zoned, we already have an LOU, I don't understand why we would go back and look at any of these things when there's, I can't find any direction from any entity within the state of Massachusetts that says Lancaster should go this route. So I respect wanting to reduce taxes and fees and costs of utilities, but I, I don't agree with kind of how this goal is coming together and where it's trying to go.
I guess I would just be concerned that achieving this goal might mean that we don't achieve the first one, right? Because you gotta spend money to make money. So if we're going to do trash pickup, which quite a few people want, that is one thing that.
I know, Stan won't talk to you about.
Many, many people have said that and I get that, that would be good. But I would imagine it would be another entity in the DPW which would require trucks and people and whatever, and we could do that, we just price it out, but does that, like where do we take it from if not, if it's not an ad? So, you know, there's, there's sort of that, that balance, but I understand, I mean, the things and people wanting to be on sewer.
They all tie together.
Yeah.
I mean, I'm, I'm aiming for economic development.
Yeah, yeah.
Aiming for economic development and to get, to attract the businesses, we're going to need this kind of infrastructure, which means we need to be able to look at long-term projections and be able to explain to people, yes, we are going to have to invest, as you said, spend some money to make some money, but ultimately, we're aiming to bring down your tax bills by attracting business by investing in these areas.
This is the exact argument we made when we passed the EZ recently, so, I mean, that's exactly the, and, and the argument we had when we talked about the override, Jason, go ahead.
Yeah, real quick, Ralph, I don't want to put you on the spot here, but I do want to try to accelerate these goal conversations. Have you read the latest version of the Lancaster Master Plan?
Of course.
It is a huge document, right? And I'm assuming you've also been through the latest version of the economic development, right?
I've not been to the latest version of the economic development plan.
So that was done by, with help of the MMRC folks and they were awesome. It's on the website, I can send you a link because it's already public record and available to discuss. But the, the plans are already in there, we already have goals, like all of that is in place and if you go and look at the latest version of the Lancaster Master Plan, which is kind of already coming up on this next version, we've been checking those boxes, that's what I've been using for the goals that I've been trying to achieve, like it has boxes to check, so if you're looking for boxes, if you're looking for plans, you know, that's a great place to be. For me, for my goal in these things, if you can overlay your goal with the Lancaster Master Plan and talk about, you know, why you want to deviate from the Lancaster Master Plan or how it supplies according to the Lancaster Master Plan, that would be much easier conversation for me to have.
I just realized I had looked at the time for a bit, it is quarter of nine, we've been here over three hours.
We have, that's all right, you have a fourth goal you've said we'll discuss?
I was prepared to suspend for tonight. I, I hope we can continue discussions of goals.
I would love to, I would argue, if you, if you have goals that you want to send to us so that we can actually look at them and. so that we can actually look at them and come so we don't have to absorb them right away, that would be helpful. But if you'd like to suspend, we can move on to the next item on the agenda, which I believe is only...
You were going to go back to the tickets, policies, procedures. I emailed you.
Oh, yes. Tickets, policies, and procedures. Did everyone have a chance to review?
Which, you know, it's up to you guys what you want to do, except for that. I do have somebody who has, has an appeal in.
Email that to me and take a quick look. All right. Thank you.
Okay. Jason, are you prepared to look at the ticket ratification? Okay. Does anyone have any thoughts? Sorry, any questions for Kate on the parking violations appeal procedures that is proposed? Hearing that, is there a motion to ratify the parking violations appeals procedures as proposed?
So moved. Second?
Okay, well, count as Gifford moves. Allison seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye opposed. Saying no, Mr. Gifford?
Aye.
Mr. Allison?
Aye.
Mr. Carrigan, aye. All right. Now I will entertain a motion to...
Hold on one second. Sorry. I just need to know what you want on the agenda for... Should I just put select board goals and that's it? Or do you want all of the A, B, and C?
That's his item.
Any, any of those? Do you want the whole number five?
Just the select board goals.
Just number five?
I would, I would love to review prior goals and see where we're at. But I'm not the one that set those and I don't have the information on that, so...